If the commission believes it has adequate information to make a decision on the application, we may close the public hearing and go into deliberations. If there are other issues that we don't have the answer to and need additional information, yeah, if there's additional information that we feel that we need in order to evaluate the application appropriately, we'll continue it to our next meeting. Either way, you will know tonight what it is that's happening. And we're going to kind of follow the same protocol for each of the applications. So first item, and I'll note for the record that Commissioner Euchel's here, so now we have our full complement of nine. First item 3.1, public hearing 2130, 23Z, Bryce Hardy seeking special permit in accordance with section 52F2, permitted uses outdoor dining of the Weathersfield zoning regulations for a temporary patio with a service station at 161 Main Street. Is someone here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening. I'm Bryce Hardy, resident of 297 Hartford Avenue, Weathersfield, and a business owner of Charles Drake Enterprises at 161 Main Street in Weathersfield. I'm here to extend the application that you guys voted on and decided that was a good thing last year. So that's what I'm here for. I think we all know the issues that are arising from growth in this town. I don't think there's anything here tonight that you're going to hear that you didn't hear four years ago in my initial application. I think I've proven over the last few years that I've done it incredibly successfully with outside of things that beyond my control. You know, it's done very well. So we believe that we've done it tastefully with our neighbors in mind, with the town in mind, our community, and so we're simply asking for an extension to the approval that you gave us last year.
And I guess before we get too far into it, Denise, could you please tell us exactly what it is that he's seeking an approval for, just so that we can basically confine the discussion to what it is that he's applying for rather than anything that already exists that isn't in front of us?
He is seeking a renewal of a permit that was originally granted in 2021. So this, he did get a renewal last year, and he is seeking a second renewal of a temporary outdoor dining and patio.
Yeah, and if you remember, just to, you know, just to go backwards a little bit, you know, our first tent was out of absolute necessity. I wouldn't be standing in front of you today if you guys, if the governor of Connecticut didn't allow us to have outside, expanded outside dining, using spaces that wouldn't customarily be used for that space. That first season was in our parking lot, where we took away spaces for parking. The second year was, again, out of necessity, which was granted through executive orders by the governor, where I didn't have to come before this commission to get those approvals. The third year, the third season, is when we moved the tent into our lawn space, where, again, I didn't need to come to this commission for approvals, but I did because I wanted to make sure that we were doing the things that were appropriate for everyone in our community. And now I'm back here before you for the same thing, you know. I don't want to play martyr, but COVID is hard, and, you know, we still have extensions that the governor's granted us until April. We're going to open up in May, hopefully after your approval. And, you know, this isn't an easy thing, and I know it looks fun, and it looks exciting and spectacular and grand, right? But without that outside dining, I don't think I could survive. So food prices have risen, you know, and on that note, I apologize for all the trucks because five years ago, when I was running a restaurant, we dealt with two vendors. I had a vendor last week say, hey, by the way, we're not coming over here tomorrow because they're not delivering because their situations have changed with COVID. So we scrambled daily to source food, to find the people who will bring it to us. So we work on that, you know, we work on trying to cut down those deliveries. But anyway, you know, so we're still fighting this fight to survive and to make it through summers and to make it, you know, through winter. So I want you to take that into consideration when you think about this. And, you know, contrary to social media popular opinion, this is not for a permanent patio, yet, for now. We're asking to do this for a few more years till we, you know, get our feet underneath us and really our, you know, so that's what we're asking for. I do have an approval through HEC, that's on the other note, which is probably where some people got confused in this application for a permanent patio, and I hope to come before you again to have that permanent so we don't have to do this anymore, you know. So that's where I'm at with that. So, yeah.
Okay. And this is a question that I'll pose to Denise now, but not look for an answer until later, which is, you know, he had said he came to us to see he was doing it right even though he didn't need to. The law changes on April 1st, and I guess my question is, at that point, you know, is there, is it basically a permitted as-of-right use that we have, you know, little or no authority to regulate, or are there aspects of what he's doing that we still have the ability to regulate? Because I, you know, I don't want to create a misunderstanding on the part of, you know, anyone as to what the scope of our authority is with respect to regulating things that have been preempted by state statute, regulating things that are within the control of the town traffic authority, you know, that sort of thing. Because I know legitimately we're going to hear about a lot of things that, you know, may or may not be within our control, but I just want to at least tee up the issue that, you know, once all is said and done, I think we as a commission need to know what it is that we have the ability to regulate.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for the applicant before we go to the public? Tom, then Peter.
Just one note of clarification. Your application tonight does not include the construction of the permanent patio that you referenced in your presentation.
No, you would expect to see the exact same thing that you saw last year and that you approved in last year's application.
Okay, so this is still the temporary, temporary special use permit in essence and not, you know, not the permanent construction?
There's nothing permanent of this, no. Well, I'm asking, I'm asking you guys to allow me to do this patio again, to extend the application that you approved last year, that I offered, I mean, you know, just so you guys also remember that last year I offered to do this. I'm not even sure, you know, if I didn't offer that, I don't know if I'd have to be here today. And, you know, and I did that because I want, you know, I understand all these issues, right? But I want, you know, I don't want a tent outside for the next 45 years, 50 years, like that's not what I want. But I do want that now because it can get me through. It can get me through this whole thing. So, and a permanent patio is incredibly expensive. We wouldn't be able to do that, which means we would have loss of revenue through the summer. And, you know, the other, you know, the other thing that I see through my, you know, other eyes are that there are projects coming down the pipe that could affect my property, that could affect what that whole, you know, confined of my property looks like, you know. I don't want to build something now so that doesn't work later when, you know, there's proposed parking plans coming through my property, you know. So if you can give me a little bit more time, that would greatly benefit my business.
Peter, then George.
Just again, point of clarification, I might have missed it. Is there a timeframe to temporary? Is it one year? What's the extension for?
I would ask for longer than one-year extension at this point so I don't have to do this again next year, but, you know, whatever the commission thinks is.
So you haven't defined the timeframe?
I haven't defined this time. I'm asking for another year.
Okay, George, bring the microphone down.
Yes, in other words, you're applying for more than one year on this, in effect.
Not really.
Right?
Not really, George, no. He hasn't defined it.
Just one year?
He hasn't defined it, it's even up to us.
I mean, I'll define it if you want. I would, I came in here to ask for more time, for sure, that I don't have to come back here year after year. I was going to ask you for three years. At that point, I really believe that I can be on my feet, have a permanent patio, and be over this part of this hurdle. You know, that's what, I'll ask for three years.
That's what I wanted to hear. What's your intention to make it work?
Three years.
Three years, okay.
Even though you take it down at the end of each year, right?
Correct.
Each season or whatever?
Correct. Typically, we've gone from May to November, May 1st to November 1st.
Okay.
And that's because out of necessity of weather, right?
Yeah.
More or less?
Mm-hmm.
And from an economic perspective, you're saying that you need the outdoor seating for basically the summer and the fall months to give you additional seating capacity to drive the revenue to keep carrying it forward?
Yeah, last summer, we saw an incredible drop in the summertime as far as people who were in town and, yeah, in the restaurant, yes. I think the outside patio is what draws people. I don't think if we had an outdoor option, they wouldn't be coming to Charles.
George?
Bryce, you've had very good success there. Do you see it a problem of too many people? And you have a limited cost in your locations, but how many you can serve, right?
As far as being able to successfully do that with the business?
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is, on a popular holiday weekend, for example, you may get a strong number of patrons and will you have the room to provide for them?
We wouldn't allow more people than we can handle. Is that?
Right, yeah, you just cut it off, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and it's just the outside venue that you're talking about? Even though people can go inside, right? If it's too crowded out there?
Yeah, yeah, yes. I mean, if we ran out of seats, we wouldn't be able to seat anyone anymore.
Okay.
Anybody on this side?
Is that where you're at?
What's that?
That's, yeah, the answer is that? I don't, I guess I was confused by your question, but did I?
Well, I think I was getting, getting at.
You don't want to see crowds and crowds of people?
Yeah, if you have more than.
So if the seats are empty, you don't want to see people standing and congregating. You don't want a concert.
Yeah. I see that, I see you as being very popular and doing quite well and seeing it now for a while, and I don't get down there all the time, but I'm down at Old Weathersfield enough. So I just wondering how you would be handling that. And of course, you're going to be encouraging signage or maybe you're, the person welcoming them to your location?
Yeah, so just to touch on the things, to touch on the things.
Encourage parking across the street even though they've already parked.
So to touch on the things that I do currently, through COVID, until I moved the tent to the street, or to the yard, I had signs that directed people with a map to public parking, also saying no parking on that street. I really tried to encourage people to use public parking. Once I moved it to the lawn, excuse me, I did take those down. I've since put a few back up just for, to get people back in, now that the south side of Center Street is one, no parking. I've put some signs back up just to direct my customers to know where to go. We have a marketing campaign, once a month, we send out to my eight and a half thousand people that come to the restaurant or follow us, parking instructions, where to park, be courteous to neighbors, respectful, and that lives on our website.
So your regular customers are getting briefed that way?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, okay.
As well as, as well as within our reservation system, so.
All right. And you think, you've had meetings, what, the manager's been involved with, you've been involved with him, Denise?
Oh, the town manager?
Yeah, resolving most of the issues that seem to.
We've really had very few issues. Last year, I didn't, I didn't, you know, it was very quiet. I didn't hear really any issues until this application came up. I know they, I know they exist, and I know there's frustration, but outside of a parking issue that is beyond my control, I really believe not, there's really nobody who can really talk negatively about the impact that the Charles has brought into the community. I think if we work together and solve, you know, the major, that major problem, which, you know, I can understand the frustrations, I think it's, you know, I think we work well together. I don't think anyone in this room can say anything but, you know.
Anything negative?
Anything negative, right? I don't think, I really don't.
No, I've been reading a lot of stuff, but, you know, that's not, not a major issue, that negativity, it's the parking and things of that nature that are brought out in the materials I was writing.
You always read negative stuff, right? You, you know.
That's all.
The positive people tend to just enjoy it.
Right. And, you know, you've been working with the town now and the neighbors and the people on your street, and have you resolved all this parking, which side of the street and all that stuff, or is that a little?
That's not my, that's not my problem to resolve. I mean, I'd like to help, but that's, that's a town.
Denise can talk.
I would love, you know.
Thanks, Bryce.
Dave?
Now, when you start off the conversation, I know COVID's been issued the last couple of years, but you said you needed two, three years to kind of get through, but COVID's gone now, right? So what issues you, I'm going to say, I'm not sure what you're going to resolve in two, three.
I guess when you can't grow a business because of restrictions, you don't grow. So we survived, you know, I, we.
I mean, it seemed we did very well, but then I'm not.
Very well is, you know, is, I mean, I would love to bring my P and L in here and show you how well we're doing, but, you know.
I guess I'm trying to say is, I'm going to go back to parking.
Yeah.
And I know you can't resolve it, but to me, that's the kind of the only issue there is. I get, you know, and you've had, it's three years from now, does that go away? I mean, I'm just trying to think somewhere along the line.
I think we really get our feet underneath ourselves and are able to build something that is, I think it gives everyone time to figure out what everyone's going to do and be able to work together to solve the issue. I think there's only one real issue here.
But more, again, COVID was a problem, so you went outside.
COVID was a huge problem.
And now the COVID thing is kind of gone away now, right? It's something I don't know.
COVID restrictions have gone, I mean, COVID restrictions have gone away.
Now, I understand, so you want to continue outside, which is, I guess is okay, but the.
You have to remember, for almost, I don't want to give it, for the first year and a half of our business, we were only allowed to have 50 seats in our restaurant.
I understand, yeah.
We survived through it, you know, but that's what, that was, that's the long and short of it, you know. Bills didn't stop, they didn't stop coming, but we got through it, thankfully, and with the support of our community who, you know, and who came out, and that's, that's why it's successful, you know, they, but that's why it looks, you know, we're, successful is a hard, a hard word because I really do feel like we're successful, right? But we're still building a business. I don't have the, we didn't, you know, we had just restored a beautiful building, right? That wasn't a small task. I guess I'm almost uncomfortable because I don't want to talk about that stuff, like I don't want, I don't want this to be a sob story, I don't want this to be a, I just want, I'd like just a little bit more time to get some, get our feet underneath us and, you know, create another beautiful space one day. I mean, I'm not going to sit here, like I said last year, I'm not going to lie to you and say I'm not going to come here after three years and try to put in a, something permanent, beautiful, pavers, you can, you know, you can, it's on file to HEC if you want to see it, you know. It's a really tasteful thing that a lot of these neighbors were here for, that saw it and talked about it. We just need a little bit more time.
Tony, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, Bryce, I went back to the minutes, the last couple of meetings, and on March 5th of 19, there were 19 people that testified, all in favor of, in supporting that. Three or four were, give constructive comment, concerned about the side streets in concert with the 2020 trap parking study that was done by the town. We came back again in March 1st of, and then there were five that testified, a little more constructive criticism. I think tonight, we're going, we're here to listen. This is a public hearing, and we're going to listen as diligent as we can. I hope you could take some notes and give us back some constructive comments after the public come in, but I don't think anybody's, that I've heard in all the times, the people I've talked to have one negative thing about you and what you've done for the town. So I think we're all very receptive to hearing what your comeback would be with some of the comments that come through.
Thank you.
And I referenced that 2020 parking study because due diligence was given by a lot of department heads, a lot of people involved, boards and commissions, EDIC, which I think you might serve on?
I do.
You do? Okay, so we, I welcome your hat as an economic development and improvement commissioner.
Sure.
And seeing what we could do is the big picture on the short-term issues that came in that study and the long-term issues, because we're here for the long haul.
Sure.
And I hope you are too, so that's our objective.
Thank you.
Anybody else over the side? Jim?
Yeah, Mr. Hardy, so just to recap, so put parking aside, you've had no formal complaints or anything about your establishment?
I've fielded a few phone calls about, just a few, a few, a few things about, you know, some speed of trucks down the street, which I've quickly rectified, called the distributors. They also reassured me that they aren't speeding down the street, they are monitored with GPS. But, you know, so I've fielded calls and I believe I've answered them successfully and, and, you know, reassured people that I'm sympathetic and ready to, you know, work together.
You handled it yourself?
I haven't heard, I, I don't, I could be wrong, but I don't believe I've heard any formal complaint from the town.
Denise, there's nothing?
Not that I have.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else before we open it to the public? All right, thanks.
Yep.
All right. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this application? Just please come on up, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Rose Pish. I live at 35 Center Street, so I'm fairly close to the intersection of Main and Center. And the recommendation that I would like the council to come away, or the commission to come away with tonight is to really stay with the original permit for the seating numbers that were permitted for this establishment. I know that there's a desire to grow businesses in town, but I think you need to understand the impact that that growth has on the neighboring people. Right now, we are no longer allowed to have any of our visitors park in front of our home. We already had a hydrant moved from the opposite side of the street to in front of our home so that a tree that has since met demise could continue to flourish. There is continued parking issues. I don't know when that will go away, but I also, since I used to work in New Haven, I received some information every once in a while from Hamden. They had a recent application for a restaurant, and the restaurant proprietor was required to rent spaces from a parking garage to address the parking situation. And I know that there is no parking garage, but perhaps there could be at one time, or something developed in the back of the fire station. I know people are alarmed about the, either minimizing some of the spaces that are allowed for the community gardens, or perhaps eliminating a few of the spaces for the community gardens. But I also thought it was the desire of the town to develop some community gardens in other areas of town. So I think that the decision by the commission needs to really be based on what can be done in the near term and what can be done in the short term. I know that, you know, I read the application where they said that there was only an increase on average, a daily average of 10 people. Well, depending on how many numbers of people are in that car, there could be anywhere between one and 10 additional parking spaces required. And since I live there, I see a lot of single people getting out of their cars. Every once in a while, you'll have a car that's got three or four people in it, but that's not the norm. So I just really would like the commission to really take a look at what has happened to the degradation of our living there. I have pictures of my two daughters, who were both raised on Center Street, learning how to bicycle on our road. You could no longer do that. They're grown, but now I have three grandchildren. The idea of them even venturing out into the road to get a ball is just, you know, remote. It used to be a very, very quiet street. There are trucks that lumber, you know, I don't have a radar gun, so I don't know what speed they're, you know, going down our road, but some of them seem to be going quite fast. And it really has impacted our way of life. And in the summertime, we do not have air conditioning, so all of our windows are open on the second floor, and there's all sorts of noises that come in there, doors slamming, people carrying on conversations, the boppers going off on the cars to, I guess to locate it because perhaps they forgot where they parked it on Center Street. But there's been a tremendous loss in the enjoyment of our home over the last couple of years. So I would like the commission to think very carefully about approving this application, or if you somehow do approve it, there should be a balance where the number of seats inside the restaurant are reduced in compliance with the number of seating that perhaps would be provided outdoors. But surely, there's got to be some way to have a happy medium where you have people that live in close proximity that can continue to enjoy their homes that we pay so dearly for in taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rose, a quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Yes.
Can you tell us about any trucks in garbage pickup? Is that, is that noticeable?
You hear them as well, but they inch down the roads, you know, one house at a time. They don't come speeding through, you know, as a through street, but you do hear the garbage trucks come through.
Okay, you think the hours of operation is a problem, or has it just been consistent and steady?
Well, you know, I, I think their hours of operation are probably a little bit reliant on how long people linger at night, but, you know, we do hear people through our bedroom windows, you know, coming and going and carrying on.
It's a restaurant?
Yes, it is a restaurant. But ideally, that restaurant wouldn't be located at the end of my street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, anyone else? You can't all be shy.
Melissa Kroll, I live at 30 Center Street, so very close to Rose. I think I would like to say first and foremost that I am very frustrated with situations that exist with parking, with noise, with delivery trucks, understanding that there is, as Bryce said, things have kind of been turned upside down by COVID, still not regulated. I work in business and, and, you know, for a corporation, that we struggle with things as well. So I would like to say upfront that I don't hold Bryce accountable for anything that's happening. for anything that's happening. Um, I think the town has a lot of responsibility on them, that they've just kind of, you know, asked some nice questions. Bryce, are you getting complaints? You're not? Okay. Good. We're gonna move on. I think Bryce has done what he could in putting up signs, but I don't think that responsibility should lie solely on him to be taken care of, to redirect people. If people see a sign that you've had made at Minuteman Press or wherever, they're gonna look at the sign and say, I don't need to follow it. Unfortunately, I think we see that there is a sense of entitlement with many people today. We have people parking in our driveway aprons all the time because they can fit their car in there, which means all of us who have eight-foot-wide driveways with a fence on one side and our house on the other can't get in and out of them. Um, again, I think that, you know, the delivery trucks have, Bryce noted it, and thank you for, for recognizing it. The delivery truck volume has picked up. Um, the speed at which they travel is a real thing. I know some people kind of were shaking their heads as that was being called out earlier, but it really is. I have two boys, um, who used to play soccer tennis in the street. You can see the lines on the road where my kids had denoted their little court. That hasn't been used in months because there's just absolutely no possibility of, of doing something like that on the street. Um, I'm all in favor, honestly, for, Bryce is trying to run a business and he's trying to run a successful business. And I think that there's a lot of merit in bringing business into town. I think that his business has actually spawned other businesses in town. Um, I do think Center Street being a parking lot adds absolutely zero merit and value to any of the other businesses along the main street. People literally come, they park their car, they go to the Charles, they come back to their car. They're not walking by the Nutmeg Home. They're not walking by Soul Shine Yoga. They're not walking by Luna Pizza. They're not walking downtown to see Drum Roll. They're literally coming in, parking their car, going to the Charles and coming back. If there was a better process that forced people to park in lots that are available, I think that there would be a lot more, there would be a lot more merit to the economic impact that the town thinks they're having with the Charles being there. Um, I am a little bit admittedly crazy with watching the parking because it is very frustrating that I work in Massachusetts, I come home from work, I've been gone for ten hours, and then I have to deal with someone parked halfway into my driveway. So, when that happens, I generally drive down to the Keeney Center and take a look one more time to see how many cars are parked there, to see why it's so crowded there that everyone has to line up on Center Street. And that lot is virtually always vacant. I have a, pictures from days and weeks and times, all times of years, on Tuesday, on a Friday night, on a Sunday brunch, um, to show that that lot is vastly underutilized. But again, I really do not think that that responsibility lies solely on Bryce. I think the responsibility lies on the town to work with him. And before further approvals are made, I think the town has to have a better plan in place for how they're gonna mitigate both the speed and the delivery truck issues as well as the parking. I think we all know, everyone, I think it's not a secret, knows that there was a, unfortunately, a fire on Center Street, um, a couple of days before Christmas. I know the residents here, some who are not here tonight, have come out before to speak about the fact that they felt that trucks wouldn't be able to pass down the road. That conversation wasn't new. It was something that you guys had been hearing about for two years in these town meetings. And it wasn't until the fire actually happened and it was actually there that the decision was finally made that maybe we should pull back parking on one side of the street. So I think that there needs to be a real consideration for future things that could potentially happen and not waiting for them to actually happen before another decision is made to look at the situations that exist.
Thank you. Can I ask if you gave written testimony?
Yes, I did.
You did? Okay. Thank you. Yes, in four rows back.
My name is Joe Urcholi. I live at fifty-four Center Street. Uh, we're very much aware of parking, uh, coming, fifty-four Center Street, by the way, is about seven or eight houses away down the street from the Charles. And usually on a busy night, weekend night or Friday night, uh, cars will be parked all the way up in front of our house and sometimes beyond. Um, it, that's what I'm just addressing. Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of how the chamber works with, uh, with the Department of Transportation and the town or the police, the signage department. But my, my recommendation would be based on seeing towns like, uh, well, surrounding towns, Hartford, probably over West Hartford, uh, certainly in different cities, you'll see public parking signs. They're usually blue with white, a giant P, which I think if you're, can't read, can figure out that means parking, with an arrow that goes where it goes. Uh, I know we love the village, you know, oh, we don't want to look like West Hartford. I agree. But if you had that kind of signage that directed people from Main Street where, I have ninety percent, I can't, I can't even guess, but a large percentage of, of customers for the Charles come via Main Street, either east or west. If they had that kind of signage, uh, maybe one right in front of the Charles and on the other side of the street directing it behind the Keeney Center, I think it would make a, make a big difference as to where people can find the place. A little sign, like they said, a little homemade sign or, uh, shop sign doesn't do the trick. I mean, a lot of elderly people there may not be able to even see the, what the sign is about, you know? It could be about, uh, cutting your grass. I mean, so, so that's, that's all I wish to, to give to the chamber.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, in the back.
I'm Norm Cavoli of fourteen Center Street, uh, the house right next to the Charles Restaurant. Uh, first, I want to say I do agree with Rose, Melissa and Joe. Uh, parking is a problem, okay? Uh, I use tonight as an example, leaving my house, there was parking on the street, Center Street down to Joe's house, number fifty-four. Uh, the, uh, there's spots available on Main Street right across from the Charles. If you look at those no parking signs, they're very confusing. People will park on Center Street before they park on Main Street and before they park behind a firehouse. There's no signs that say public parking behind a firehouse. In general, and always on inclement weather, Center Street will back up first with spots allowed behind the firehouse. Okay? Uh, with those no parking signs on one side of the street, I agree with Rose, people will always, I'm on the even side, they'll park in front of my house for lunch and dinner all the time. So I cannot have my friends or my third vehicle parked on the street. Okay? Inconvenient, but it's needed for safety. Do you want to go back though to a meeting we had here a couple, three years ago? When we approved the restaurant, Bryce had us show that he had fifty-two spots available by town regulation. He did his parking spot behind a firehouse, Main Street and Keeney. I think, George, you mentioned at that meeting that we all knew then they're gonna park on Center Street. It's convenient and it's neat. Okay? The, so Bryce has done nothing in the last three years that you would not expect the restaurant owner to do. He has, serves food, he serves clients, they drive cars, they park cars legally. Okay? Uh, tonight, they, there's a bunch of cars parked behind the, yoga building and the gift shop. Uh, Jim Hughes has a sign, no Charles parking. Don't know what the cars are doing there, but there's ten or twelve cars parked there with two or three on the grass right behind my house. Okay? Again, that didn't happen until you put the no parking signs on Center Street. They're needed for safety for the fire trucks, I agree, but it makes for more congestion. Okay? The, uh, let's see here. Oh, the trucks, yeah, I do see a lot of trucks go by. Uh, I hear them, I go outside, I look at them. They're probably not going that fast, but they're very loud. Uh, they're big trucks. Uh, two or three times trucks will park in front of my driveway. I go out there, ask them and they're very nice and they move. They leave, their engine's running. I ask them to shut them down. They do, uh, because it's not the engine that's running, it's a refrigeration unit. So on a hot summer day, I'm out in my yard, a little annoying, but they've always come. I talked to Bryce a couple of times, whatever I asked, he did. Okay? He helped the town. Uh, tonight, as an example, it's congested out there with those no parking signs. I saw one car a couple of days ago up and down Center Street three times, looking for a place to park. I mean, why three times? I didn't understand that. Okay? Uh, I tell them to park on Main Street or behind the lot. One lady asked me where the firehouse was. Okay? There's no signs that say parking behind the firehouse. Okay? So the, uh, and tonight, as bad as it is, it, you know, with, there's no worse than a summer. So with that tent you had last summer, parking was still a problem. It's no worse tonight on a Tuesday night in the middle of February, so it can't get any worse. Okay? So I do recommend that you do approve the tent. Allow Bryce to continue what a normal restaurant is expected to do, given we approved that a couple of years ago. He's put, I, when he was building that building, I saw twenty to twenty-five people working there full-time for two to three months. Did not add up what they paid him, but more than a few thousand dollars for sure. He built a beautiful building. That's all he's doing now is trying to be in a restaurant business, something we allowed a couple of years ago. Okay? The, uh, oh, my last cup. I do want to make a formal complaint though. I did find a french fry on my front porch and my complaint, it was a little stale, but it wasn't too bad.
Thank you. Somebody in the way back? Big potato that scares me. Yeah, they're bigger birds carrying that.
Hello, everyone. My name's Wanda Hoopel at fifty-five Center Street, and I want to start out like Norm did. I agree with Norm and Melissa and Joe and, and, um, neighbor I haven't met, Rose. Yeah, thank you. Um, we've been at Center Street since, um, early COVID and when we saw the Charles business having to start at COVID, but he's done very well. And I applaud, um, what he's done to provide a, you know, a beautiful restaurant. And I, I like to see their success. Um, but I'm learning more and more about the cost to the neighborhood. Um, we're down where it wouldn't normally affect us with parking, um, but now we have to mourn the loss of parking on our side of the street because we're a one-lane driveway, the downside of buying a historic home in a, in beautiful old Weathersfield. One lane to shuffle our three cars and when my daughter's boyfriend is over, four cars. Um, but that's okay. We'll, we'll manage and do that. I just, um, I want to, to see, um, how we can provide a, a more peaceful, back to a peaceful setting for our, our neighbors who are more affected. Uh, we had a, a meeting at our house on Sunday night and, and I could really see what a problem it's become for their quality of life further down towards the Charles, um, based on noise and safety issues that are caused with people not always being respectful. One of our neighbors, for instance, um, Brendan hasn't spoken yet, but you'll hear his story. And, um, I won't speak for him, but people have been, um, dealing with a lot more than we have down at our side of the street, but now everyone's affected because we lose half of our street parking. And, um, my husband was thinking of a solution. He couldn't be here tonight. He had a prior commitment. Um, and I don't know if it's a hundred percent supported by the neighbors, but it seems like a great solution could be to have the street from Woodland down to Main a one-way and, um, going, emptying into Main Street. So cars that are coming down Main Street do not go on our street. And, um, I know it might be hard to get approval for a one-way and it would, it would mean some extra provisions and, and a, a little change of things with access to the parking lot that the Charles does have with the twelve spots that they have. Um, I don't know if it's feasible, but there is space in the back to access that parking could, uh, that little lot from the back end if that were, um, an option. So trucks could access, uh, come through, pull through and then pull right out. They wouldn't have to come down center. There would be no turning around of cars in people's driveways all the time, creating safety issues for kids and, and whoever. Um, so it's, it's something I think we could consider as, as a solution to the parking issue, but also good signage that says, you know, resident only beyond the sign parking and clear signage for the public areas so people know and can get used to. I think people, once they realize that it's okay to walk a little bit to the Charles, um, that's a mindset. We walk all the time. You know, we have a tradition, almost three to four times a week to walk down to Comstock from our house. It's point four miles each way. And we just love walking through Old Weathersfield to get there. And that's part of the experience. If people could just realize walking from Keeney, which is across the street diagonally, is not that far and it's actually closer than parking way down on our street. So if people got into the habit through clear signage and maybe a reminder when they make their reservation, this is okay. When you come, just know parking is at, you know, at the Keeney Center or, or right here, you know, just give people more guidance because people just seem to have no clue. And, and I know Bryce put up signs a couple of years ago. We love our neighbors and we appreciated those signs, but people didn't listen to, you know, they didn't, it didn't work. Um, so that's just, um, a couple of options, um, better signage and access to parking through that, but also perhaps a one-way street. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Suzanne Barton. I'm at fifty-five Main Street, so not impacted directly by the traffic of the Charles at Main Street. And I'm lucky enough to have a fire hydrant in front of my house, so I don't have to deal with people parking there. But I certainly deal with noise and speeding and my kids not being able to play in front of my house. Unfortunately, we're here tonight to talk about a tent being put up and all the public comments are gonna be regarding parking. The town has a parking issue and that issue with parking is hindering economic development. And that is a problem for the town to fix. It is not a problem that the business owners should be forced to fix or rectify, rectify or put up their own signs or send reminders to people in reservation systems. It is a town problem. I know the town, Tony rec, uh, referenced it, has a twenty-twenty parking plan and that is a plan for the future. That is grant money that is hoping to come for the future. There is nothing that has been done until recently with making Church Street one-way that the town has done for now. There are one street in the neighborhood of the Charles that has lines on it, that are just lined with street lines. A very simple solution to have a line down the center of the street with potential parking along it that would, one, slows traffic and two, gives people designated parking spots. So if someone doesn't park in a spot, you can call the police if they're parked in your driveway or if they're impinging and not in an actual spot, and then things will start to change. But the town has done nothing until recently to solve this problem. And it is not a problem for you to fix. and it is not a problem for you to fix, it is not a problem for Bryce to fix, it is a problem for the town to fix. And everyone who's here tonight with a problem with the town or people parking where they shouldn't be parking and all these issues, I strongly encourage you to also come to Town Council every other two, Monday night, and talk to the town councilors, who are the ones who can fix this problem. But this is not a problem for the businesses, and the business development is being hindered because of it, and I have a big concern with that. So in final, I support Bryce's tent now, and I will be back here to support his patio when we come back. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
I am.
She had a, she had a question for you. You don't have to answer it if you don't like this.
Oh, I'll answer.
But I'll ask.
I mean, I'll wait until it's questions first.
Have you tried meeting with the town manager or appearing before the council with suggestions as to how they might resolve things?
Um, I have not because I, like other, many other people in the neighborhood, park my car in my driveway, and I walk to everywhere in Old Weathersfield.
No, but I meant the people in Old Weathersfield, some of your neighbors, some of the other business people.
I have lots of suggestions that I would happily meet with Fred about. Um, I have not. Um, but I think, having lived in larger cities, resident parking passes are in a very appropriate way, lining the streets is a very appropriate way, and signs that say public parking that people can read, that are large enough for people to read, are very affordable and appropriate starting points.
Thank you. Thank you. Orange.
For the record, Brooks Parker, twenty-four Lorraine Road. My partner lives at thirty Center Street, so I spend a fair majority of my time at that residence. I would just like to implore the council, if the plan included fifty-two spots at the fire station and the Kinney Center, town needs to do a better job making sure those fifty-two spots are being utilized. The striping in the fire station is awkward, it's dark, there's red paint, I believe, to show where people can park versus where volunteer firefighters should park, and obviously it's important that they have spots to park in, but the striding is poor. The Kinney Center absolutely is always empty enough that any car parked on Center Street could park there. And I've counted it more than my fingers and toes. So I think the applicant does bear responsibility if his permit, excuse me, allows for parking fifty-two spots. He has jurisdiction, even if those spots aren't controlled by the town. So planning and zoning regulates parking, please consider that. I know it's not a problem that's going to be solved tonight. I have dined at the Charles, I've spent time at the Charles. It's a very nice establishment, but it has impacted what was a residential neighborhood before. It was a, I believe, a hair cutting salon, so the change in use was significant. And so with a significant change in use, I believe that the town needs to do a better job, and so does the applicant, in looking at the two assets that do exist. And if we reach a point in time where those are full, then the town could look at something like expanding the fire parking lot. But I've heard good suggestions here, and I think the signage and the public parking could be better. I think unfortunately the, the nice signs put up by the Charles are very ineffective. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Hello, Andy Wisner, one hundred Center Street. So I agree with a lot of what I've heard here tonight, I just want to make two additional points. At one hundred Center Street, we're closer to the intersection of Woodland and Center, and what I observe there are trucks doing turns in the wide area where those two streets intersect, which looks to be very, a very dangerous maneuver, and we need to control that. The other thing that I would say is, you know, looking back through the record, the town approved a restaurant that needed fifty-four, fifty-three spaces and ended up with fourteen with the other spaces to be used at some off-site areas, the Kinney Center, the fire station, and so on. I think that coupled with the idea that, but in a, in a letter, in an undated letter in the record, we see that the covers that Bryce has are the same in the winter and the summer, except for maybe ten on average. So the idea that we're, we're told that we need the tent to get on our feet to make the restaurant succeed seems to be undermined by the various data that he's producing, stating the businesses running at the same pace, winter and summer. In the winter, we see no tent, same amount of business, why do we need the tent? And what, what this ties into is the lack of parking. So we, the tent will bring more people, he told us that tonight. I think that the tent therefore needs to be used sparingly. Not at all, really, we should not allow this tent because it will just exacerbate the parking problem we already have. Uh, it's designed to bring more people to the restaurant. That would mean more demand for parking, we have a parking deficit. The other thing that I would say is that, you know, he's asking for a three-year term. And I think I would vote for a shorter term so that we can continue to have these hearings and have this oversight and try to resolve the parking issue, and then once that happens, then we can talk about a longer term for the permitted use. So I really appreciate, uh, what you're doing tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good question, Andy. What do you think of the one-way going east to west towards Main Street?
I fully support it, great idea, and resident-only parking permits. Um, you asked if anybody here had been in touch with the town manager. Um, I submitted testimony tonight, a, a letter, my wife and I, Sheila Houlihan. And I sent that letter to the town manager, and he gave me a very nice response. So they are aware of what's happening. He did say that they're waiting for grant money and that they have applied for more grant money, but I don't have, what I didn't find out was what the timeline is for any resolution. But I think the town manager is well aware, and I know that a group of our neighbors did meet with the town manager a few years ago about this parking issue.
When did you send that letter to Fred?
This morning.
And he responded back to you today?
Immediately, yeah.
Thank you.
Could I just follow up?
Yes.
On the one-way, uh, will it still require half the street, no parking?
I mean, we could, we, I, we haven't discussed that, so I can't say.
Because I think that was for safety, right? So regardless if it's two-way or one-way, you need the extra space, is my question.
Understood.
Something that should be looked at.
I think if we had resident-only parking coupled with one-way, a lot of this issue would disappear. You know, I think, I think a lot of issues that we all have with parking would, with the restaurant would disappear if the parking were resolved. And I do want to say that I thoroughly enjoy going to the Charles. It is a wonderful place, and Bryce is a terrific host. All that we're concerned about is the parking.
Thank you very much. Yes?
Hi, my name is Dorothy Devick, fourteen Willard Street. I don't live on Center Street, um, so I can't speak to any inconveniences in my life regarding the parking, but I can say that I have a lot of restaurant backgrounds, and especially in a neighborhood like Old Weathersfield, where we consider ourselves a walking community, so many people have touched on that tonight. To have a restaurant in this community and not allow them to have an outdoor space where people who are walking can be a part of it, like when we do Scarecrows on Main, for instance, or, um, you know, when there's other festivals going on in Old Weathersfield. It's important to have a presence as a restaurant. It's not an easy business to meet, and, um, if you want it to be successful, you need to support it. That said, I agree with everything that Suzanne said about the parking. There should be some solutions, and I'd be happy to speak about that at Town Council, too, if it would help.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, my name is Brendan Dougherty, and I reside at twenty-seven Center Street. And, you know, I agree with a lot of things people said, so I'm not going to reiterate it. I'll just cut right to chase. I'm legally blind, and I moved here in nineteen ninety, and I bought the house on Center Street in two thousand and eleven, and I put my life savings into it, and that's where I want to live. But since the restaurant's gone in, the parking is the biggest issue. You've created a high-risk environment, an environment that's unsafe for me as a resident and the other people living there. The parking's the biggest issue. I'll just tell you briefly, we had the incident the Friday before Christmas, and here's what happened to me. I'm sitting in my home one evening, and all I hear is a loud car just sitting out front, and it's just loud. And I walk out my front door, and I see a car sitting there right in front of my driveway. Then the car moves up, and it parks between my driveway and my neighbor's. It's a small space, it can't accommodate a car parking there. The front of the car is into the apron of my neighbor's driveway, and the back of the car is the apron of my driveway. I'm outside, and the guy stops, and says, "You can't park there." He says, "Oh, yeah?" He proceeds into the restaurant. I said, "Okay, fine." I go back in the house, I sit down, I'm minding my own business. About three hours later, I hear a car alarm go off, and it's the car horn, and it's just beeping and beeping, and it didn't stop. I looked out the window, and it was a car that parked there where it shouldn't have been. The lights are blaring, the horn's blaring. I look outside, and finally it stops. The gentleman went into the restaurant, came out of the restaurant and set his car alarm off on purpose, and walked up the street the whole time. When he got there, he shut it off, goes, "Uh, my car's still here. I didn't get towed, what do you think about that?" And I didn't say too much, you know? And then he started to verbally berate me with his girlfriend and throwing expletives at me. Now, I'll, I'll stop for a minute. My eyesight is a disease of the retina. I lose all aspects of my vision. I lose night, I lose day, and I have tunnel vision. I have twenty-four hundred, and I have fifteen degrees of vision. At night, I don't see too much, I don't see too much at all. And some people here in the neighborhood, they know it, and some people in the community know it. And I moved here on Center Street because of how serene, pristine, and the safety and the charm of Old Weathersfield. I love living here. But putting up with this, so he proceeds to start to berate me. He sees I'm having trouble seeing. He says, "What's the matter? You need glasses, you can't see?" I said, "That's right, I don't see very well, I'm legally blind." He says, "Well, I'm legally deaf. How do you like that, you blind blankety-blank?" So, I don't take guff from anybody, but you know what? I'm sixty-two now, I'm not top dog anymore. I still have bark, but I don't have the bite, the bite to back it up. So I had to put my tail between my legs and let this guy come at me. His girlfriend came on my property. I didn't move forward because I can't see anything, I'll get my clock cleaned. He finally gets in his vehicle, he starts it up, had a streamy loud exhaust. He's revving it up, and then he sets the car alarm off again and goes down the road with it popping and cracking. I just turned around, I started walking back towards my house. It's dark out now, my light's on, I find my way to the front door, and there's a voice coming across my lawn. I got the plate, I got the plate number, and I didn't know who I said, who, who? I didn't know who it was. It was a gentleman walking his dog who witnessed the whole thing. He says, "I have the plate number, call the police, let's call the police." I says, "What are they going to do? They're not going to do anything, I should have called earlier when he parked illegally." But I didn't. And he said, "This is wrong, this is so wrong." I says, "What are you going to do?" He says, "You know, let's call the police." I said, "You can't, it doesn't matter at this point." He identified himself, he lives on Hartford Ave, he was walking his dog. He gave me his name, I go inside, I got my big black Sharpie and a big white pad, wrote his name down and phone number. He had the plate number of the vehicle. He said, "If they come back, if they retaliate against you, let me know." He goes, "This is wrong." He says, "Those people are trash, that's trash that's coming in here." And you know what? What are you going to do? This restaurant, not so much you, but the parking, does not adequate parking, and this is what we're dealing with. And I had somebody berate me like that. It's created an unsafe environment where we live, a high-risk environment. And it's gotten to the point where, what are we supposed to do? We're dealing with all this. You need to find other parking, you've got to get the cars off the street. Now, what if that guy did something to me? What would the liability be? If someone came at me and did something to me? I can't defend myself, I couldn't do a damn thing. And this guy, he came close. We've had a couple of incidents, we don't need any more. I love living here in Old Weathersfield, this is where I'm going to stay. But parking, it's the biggest issue, it's a major, major problem. I could keep going on and on, but I think I've made my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Brendan, a quick question?
Sure.
Are you in favor of the one-way driving down the street and more signage on the?
To tell you the truth, I really haven't even thought about it. You know, I do know there's supposed parking that was approved straight through in the back, and I know the Kinney Center's wide open. If we can just get the cars there, I understand. The restaurateur, he's trying to make a living, but the parking's an issue, it's just the biggest thing. And yeah, the cars fly up and down the street, and the trucks are going up and down the street. Part of the charm of where we live is the people there, and the people around this community are excellent. The people on Center Street, they're just, they're super people. You know what? But some of the people coming in, and you can't control who comes in, they don't care because they don't live here. But our street is part of the charm that brings people in. Our street has become the parking lot for the Charles. By the way, you've got the nicest parking lot in the state of Connecticut. All right? If we can just do something about the parking, because you know what? Risk management, one day, something's going to happen. It's inevitable with the amount of people up and down that street. So one-way or not, I really haven't thought about it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you for your time and hearing me.
No, thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, I'm Michelle Critticus, eighty-five Center Street. Tonight, we were here to remind Bryce, we love the Charles. It's a great thing, and I think a lot of people enjoy it so much. It's our historic town, it's been preserved all these years to last as a village atmosphere, neighborhood, and it's been that way ever since. The only issue we've all had is the parking issue, obviously. I've been studying the issue myself a little bit, and I have, in my own mind, come up with a solution. I don't know if it would be acceptable or not. The reason the fire truck, I think, could not come down Center Street the night of the fire was because there may have been in the T of Center Street in Maine, cars parked on both sides of Main and Center Street. If we put a no parking zone in that area, large enough for a fire truck to swing around that corner, there's no issue. We have been here for a million years and have no problem with the fire trucks before, except for the new additional parking. We, as neighbors, respect one another, and when we park our cars, we try to stagger them a little bit, knowing full well if we don't, when somebody backs out of their driveway, they're going to smash into us. So, given that, if we did that, in addition to, I was very upset, and I'm not in favor of a one-way street, because I don't think we should change anything about us. I think what we should do is have residents only, put a sign at the end of the Charles, residents only, same thing at the end of the street, give it time. And there was no adequate signage in order to le- lead people to a parking lot that has room in it. In addition to that, we have Scarecrows on Main, Christmas on Main, uh, bicycles, thank you, bicycles on Main, Porch Fest and all this, and we bring a ton of people in, which is beautiful, that's what our community is all about. We expect to grow even further, but what are we going to do about the parking? We have new businesses in there. There's more and more restaurants, we have another. We have another one coming in soon. What's being done about the parking? They've been sitting on this way too long, and now it's affected a neighborhood. And there were so many little things, and I think I sent it to somebody, I actually drew a picture of it, so you could see what I was talking about. And I think there's some simple remedies without getting crazy. Our problem is, our street's been taken away from us. It's not fair, as it wouldn't be for anyone who has a, all of a sudden, one day, you have a street you can drive down, and the next day you don't. So, I think there are issues that can be resolved very simply if they get the signage out there and make it easy. I mean, the Charles is a beautiful place. You should see the window treatments on the second floor. But this is what we have to deal with. It's the ability to get the job done. Nobody's, everyone's passing it off, it seems, and we're being ignored. It's our community, as well as everyone else's, but they have to do something. They can't sit on it any longer. And I don't know how long it takes to get a sign directing traffic, even if you put a big "Park" with an arrow on the floor, guiding them into the parking lot. There's no reason this hasn't been done. And I had three fire trucks in my front yard four nights ago. They were there, 2:00 in the morning, but they were there. And if you feel that our street is too narrow for a fire truck and two cars, then every street in Weathersfield is too narrow for two cars and a fire truck. Let's be real. And we are not a main artery. Thank you. Any questions? No?
You get off easy.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
Anybody else? Anyone else? All right, just for the record, we received emails, all of which addressed or raised parking issues from Larry Powers, 126 Main Street, Linda Brogan, 31 Coleman Road, Melissa Croll, 30 Center Street, Andrew Wisner and Sheila Houlihan, 100 Center Street, John Curran, 34 Center Street, Dave and Wanda Hoopel, 55 Center Street, Andrea Ladd, 41 Center Street, Deirdre Castoro, 81 Center Street, Julia Sapias, 136 Main Street, and Michelle Critikos, 85 Center Street. We also received a staff memo from Derek Gregor late today, basically identifying that there's a parking problem in Old Weathersfield, and making recommendations that if we were to approve this, that they have no increase in the daily patrons from the seating capacity that was initially approved. Modify the site as required to make the two parking spaces that are lost for outdoor seating available in the onsite parking lot to return to 14 onsite spaces originally approved. Require valet services during peak hours to use the Kene Center lot, leaving spaces located closer to Main Street available for the public. Install permanent signs along the Main Street and Center Street frontages that clearly direct patrons to utilize public parking lots with associated map, and requiring the applicant to return to the commission in one year to extend the temporary permit. We also received, in our packet, correspondence from the town manager indicating that south side of Center Street between Woodland and Main was going to be a no parking zone. We also received a copy of the 2020 Old Weathersfield parking study. We've got pretty much all of this today, or yesterday afternoon. Is there anything that we've received that I haven't talked about, or do you have any further comments on Derek's memo or anything?
In the memo from January 5th from the town manager, he does identify that when vehicles are parked along both sides of the road, the available travel width is severely restricted to 12 feet. So that was the indication for the public safety concern that prompted the restriction of parking along one side.
Okay, thank you. Do you have, I know that over years, there have been conversations about getting a grant for an additional parking lot behind the fire station and connecting things. Do you have, I'm not asking you how it's coming, do you have any sense of where that stands?
We currently have about $500,000 available for parking behind the fire station. The town engineer has come up with multiple conceptual plans, and also plans for additional parking at the Kene. But in terms of timing, it's something that would not break around this year, you know, so it will not be something that could accommodate this at this time.
Okay. Well, would it likely be something that we will discuss this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me Denise, how many spaces does that give us, additional? You know? The concepts that the engineer's working on?
The one at the Kene, I believe it's about 40 to 50 spaces. The parking for the firehouse varies on design, and it depends a lot on the gardens.
And it depends a lot on who participates in the parking? Thank you. All right, now that we've taken a little break, anybody else in the public still have?
Rose Pish from 35 Center Street. One of the things that I had in my notes that Michelle touched on a little bit, is the setbacks from the corner to where you can pull through into roadways. I believe it's 25 feet. I'm not a traffic engineer, however, I believe those setbacks were set back when the majority of the cars were automobiles, not the big SUVs and the great big trucks that we have parking there today. I think that should be revisited in every intersection in Old Weathersfield. It's very hazardous to try to leave the intersection of Center Street. It's very difficult sometimes to leave the intersection of Woodland with Church Street, depending on who's parking where. So I believe that that is an issue that should be addressed, I don't know, by whoever's the traffic engineer in the town of Weathersfield, regardless of whether or not you're able to rectify this parking situation in the near future. But simply, you know, deciding that the setback ought to be 50 feet perhaps instead of 25 feet, just so you have clear line of visibility going down both sides of the street. It's hazardous to take a right-hand turn, and it's hazardous to take a left-hand turn onto Main Street. There's bicyclists, pedestrians, and automobiles all over the place. And at certain times of the year, as mentioned by Michelle, it's really bad with a lot of pedestrians, you know, taking in the sites that we offer. So if that could be taken into consideration, again, it would probably just be a matter of somebody going out there, deciding that it's X amount of feet, and moving the existing signs that are there back a little bit. And that would improve some of the safety for all of us right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to? Okay.
Just to follow up on Denise's point about the parking with, behind the fire station, by the firehouse company one, and the bloody property owners. I've been approached from the town about that. I've talked to the town manager and the town engineer. They were very active and proactive at one point in time, but I haven't heard from them about this plan in months. Prickets. So, I don't know what happened. There's multiple streams of money, not just economic development money available, there's public safety money available for it because of effects of firehouse, a bunch of things that I've just found out about. But I haven't heard anything from the, from the town manager and the town engineer. There's prints out there for it, conceptual, a whole bit, but nothing.
Thanks. All right, anyone else before we invite the applicant to come back up? All right.
So...
You win the Nostradamus Award for anticipating that the comments were going to be about parking.
Yes. You know, I mean, here we are. I think overwhelmingly, you've heard that the biggest problem is parking. So, I agree, you know, I have to carry some burden, but you know, I'm here to run a business, and with that means a level of responsibility for my neighbors, just as I have a responsibility for my neighbors at my house. And I think I've done a really good job at that. Unfortunately, I can't build a parking lot. And I can't, you know, hold accountable to people who berate residents, and that's a terrible story, and I'm so sorry that that happened to you. You know, that's a, that's a one, you know, that's one person out of, you know, so many who have visited us, and that's not the clientele we promote to have. And I really am very sorry for that. So there is a responsibility. I think I've shown that I want to be a responsible neighbor, you know, somebody who works with you. I don't want to feel like I walk down the street and people look at me not as a neighbor. So, I think we're stronger together. I don't know what the answer is to alleviate these concerns you have. I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect. I have plenty of ideas myself, they're not far off from what you guys have. I think it's our responsibility to come together, to work, to see what works for a business community and for residents, and really come to the town with a plan. There are going to be more businesses that come into town, and it's going to be great. And there's room for it, and you know, you know, when great businesses come into town, it will bring more. And just in two years of us being open, we see so many businesses that have already opened, people realizing there's an opportunity for success for, to do better for this amazing community, you know? And I think, from what people say, they want that, they want to see it. We have an amazing community, we have amazing, you know, it's awesome. I mean, I'm on the committee that runs Bicycles on Main, and Porch Fest, and Scarecrows. I'm on economic development, I'm actively trying to find new developers to come in and take, you know, all over Weathersfield, but so I, you know, it's going to come, and it should, but you know, I really do follow your sentiments that, you know, the town has to come, you know, has to do more. I think immediately, for no cost, striping Main Street to have designated parking spots to prove to my customers that there's four parking spots in front of my building. There's not one, there's not zero, because the signs are complicated sometimes, Norm. You know, those are super simple things. I mean, signage, oh my God. There should be a 10-foot sign at Kene Center that says, "Park here." I mean, it's a, I will go to Minuteman and make a 10-foot sign for, in the meantime, maybe I'll pass a hat, maybe we can divert costs, but you know, when I put this, when I brought those signs and put them out, I felt like I was almost being like, like passive-aggressive, saying, you know, "Hey, do something here," but you know, I took the time to do that, and I hope it, it did pay off, I know it did. There was a lot less parking when I had, when we had no parking signs. I don't think the parking can hinder this application, what I'm asking for. I don't think it, I don't think me being, you know, denied this, the ability to do what is right for the community, what is right for my business, should be affected by parking. I, you know, I understand it, and I do, I have faith in this town that they will, it will happen. It's going to happen, it has to happen. If not, then there's no, there's no town, there's no town center, there's nothing. I mean, people will go away, people will stop coming to our town. I don't think anyone wants that. So, you know, I sympathize with our residents, I, you know, and I, I hope that the commission sees that there is an end of the road with the town doing the right thing, you know, Denise knows a lot more about the inner workings of how this is all going to come together, but there's a lot of exciting things happening that are, hopefully, could happen in the near future, you know, real, real improvements, not only for everybody, you know, so, you know, I, go ahead, George.
Yeah.
Thanks for saving me.
Bryce, do you want that section of Old Main Street paved this year as one of the first paving projects in town?
I think there's...
Now, I'm the first, wait a minute, let me finish.
Yep.
I'm the first one in town to say Old Weathersfield got paved over last year, including, in that midst, area and others.
Took them half a year.
I'm not trying to point at you, but you live on the green, what do you want me to do? And, you know, I feel all, New Weathersfield, where I live on the west side, has got to get a lot of the town paving money, and I'm going to be pushing for that. But I also realize there are still two or three state projects going in in Old Weathersfield, plus Main Street is awful, from the center up to Center Street. And I walked it during our events, and man, you can almost stumble in those cracks and pavement. So that's got to be, that's got to be done this year. And how do you feel about all that? Or anything else that hung out, Warren?
I mean, I could go on and on about what I think is, could benefit the neighborhood and Main Street, but yeah, I think Main Street needs to get paved, for sure. And in part of that paving, I think, you know, I mean, I think there needs to be a whole streetscape. I think there's opportunity to, I think there's opportunity everywhere to better, to better lighting, to better, you know, access to business, to, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunity to do a lot of things, to connect neighborhoods, to connect bike trails, you know, all super exciting things that are in the, in the works. But we're talking, you know, none of these, none of this discussion is going to get done tomorrow. It can't. You can't build a parking lot overnight, and you know, but we're, we're close. We have $500,000 from a grant that we got over two years ago. And you know, there's plans, but you know, I, you know, I don't know how it works in the town, I don't know why things take a while, but you know, that's what happens, you know? Yeah, absolutely. Main Street needs to be paved.
Bryce, I have a question for you. I've been to your restaurant a number of times, and it's great, and I applaud you. And I had guests from out of state come, and when they asked, "Well, where should I park?", and I told, "Kene Center or the fire station." And they did that. And then I asked them, "Well, did you find that inconvenient?" I think it was even raining that night. And they said, "No." I mean, they're, they're thinking it was just a short walk, and they've been to other venues where it's a lot worse. So they liked the town, they liked the location, and they thought it was great. So if we were to simply say, "No parking on Center Street, except for residents, put signs up everywhere, direct people in-state, out-of-state, in-town, out-of-town, to, you know, the other parking locations that are available," would that be okay with you? How would you see that as impacting your business, is really my question, if we were to take that step? As a town?
I think it would just force the problem down the street. But, you know, I, there's a bigger conversation to be had than just the Charles and the tent, right? I mean, you know, we have a Masonic Hall that is going to get... I mean, you know, we have a Masonic Hall that is going to get developed one day, it has to, otherwise it's going to fall down and, well, maybe that would be a great parking lot, but, you know, I don't know what you do. I, how would I feel about no parking, except for res, I think, I think there has to be, unfortunately, I think there's going to be a problem. I, when I was doing my parking studies, coming in and going up and down Center Street during construction without people there, there was, with residents parked on both sides, it was a tight squeeze. It's just, it's just a fact of the matter, you have two cars next to each other, I don't think there's a travel lane that is significant for a fire truck. I don't, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but it just seems to be, if it, if it was too tight for my guests to park or for any of the other businesses in the town to park there, I don't know, I don't know, I think, I think you have to really, I mean, maybe it's widening the street, like, I don't, I don't know, but.
I guess my question is related to your business sense.
Would I be okay with having no parking?
If, if people, I mean, the people that I told to go to Keeney Center, they didn't think it was a big deal.
I think with, I think with more signage and more communication, or more signage, I think people get to the Keeney Center. And yeah, I think if there's no parking on, I don't know, I think if, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I think it's pushing the problem down the street, which is maybe the good thing, right? They get to the firehouse, they get to the Keeney Center.
Well, Bryce, we've talked a lot about parking with the big capital P, right? And underneath parking, right, is regulation and that's all the signage that we're talking about, no parking and moving things around this. The one that doesn't get talked about, and we're talking about capacity, right?
Mm-hmm.
The one that doesn't get talked about a lot is enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? How often have you observed, there's lots of no parking and stuff down there now as it is, how often have you observed enforcement underway?
I think, you know, I'm, I think, I think there could be better enforcement, I think, you know, yeah, I think if people, I think if the, I think if the police were on the street more, less of this would happen, like, I, I would be so frustrated if people were parking into my driveway. And I see it happening and it's like, what the, what are these people, like, how would they even think that's okay? But yet there's like, I would, if that was, if somebody was parking halfway into the Charles, I would call the police and have them removed from my driveway, right? I mean, but I don't, like, I, I can understand not be, I don't know, like, I think there, I think there has to be more enforcement, for sure. And I don't know what the rules are, I think there's setbacks that you can park within, you know, figure out how much parking can actually happen on Center Street, I don't know. Like, between driveway to driveway, like, can you fit one car, two cars? I think sometimes I've seen four, so.
Striping will help.
I think striping is a quick, easy, inexpensive option. You know, I don't know if no parking works on, I don't know. We got to get people to Keeney Center.
You've got to get people to Keeney Center, push the problem to Keeney Center. It's not, it's not difficult to solve this. Getting your people to go there, I agree, is going to be a challenge, but that is the answer, it's that simple. So all the discussion and all the staff work focuses around directing people using the Charles and other establishments on Main Street to those two lots, you will solve the problem and the residents will be happy.
There's a lot of talk, first of all, I don't know if people have read this master plan, it's a, it's a guideline for the town to, to consider, right? They paid a lot of money, there's like, there's a whole chapter in here about signage and it was actually amazing to me that I saw some of these signs, but I mean, right here, I mean, they call for it in this plan, you know, and it's, it's there. You know, there should be one of these on every street that says to Village Center, to Keeney Center, to Wed Barn, this parking piece should be there, I mean, you know, it should be at the Keeney Center. We're going on two years of frustration and, I don't know, I support the town full-heartedly, I know they're going to do the right thing in the long run, but when's the long, long run, so, you know? So, I mean, there's a lot of answers to problems right here. And they, they talked about in 2007 about parking problems and getting people into our businesses so that they can be better and survive and bring more, more revenue into town. A lot of these things are happening, a lot of them. But I think, I think tomorrow there should be signage going up, you know, so, but until then.
Paul, did you have a question?
Yeah, just want to add on, Bryce, in the town engineer's recommendations, he said, require valet parking.
Mm-hmm.
What's the economics of that look like for you and what type of?
So I presented that to this commission back in, when I originally did that, because that was something that the town suggested I look into. It's a huge financial burden. I think the other logistical problem that people don't understand is at the Keeney Center, there's not one business in this town that doesn't have a parking issue and there's not one business in town that has enough space for their business. I don't, I don't know if that's totally true, there might be some.
There might be one.
But some of the bigger, you know, there's not enough parking for Lou's, there's not enough parking for Village Pizza, it's just the fact of the matter, they all get sent to Keeney Center. So the Keeney Center takes the brunt of everybody, so I don't know, I mean, so what's going to happen? Okay, I'll get valet out there, it's going to cost me about $25,000 a year and that's only on Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, and that's fine, so I'll bring all my cars to the Keeney Center. Where's Lou's people going to park? Where is Old Town going to park? Where's Luna Pizza going to park?
No, come on, come on.
No, I'm, what I'm saying is, okay, fine, I'll bring all my cars to the Keeney Center, but what, how's that, where's, now where does Luna Pizza people park? Where does? I'm sorry?
No, we're not doing this.
This is a parking regulation here.
I think the, I think the point is that that's a shared lot already and I know that doesn't, it is, it's a shared lot, they're, like, my people have to park at Keeney Center, right? Well, so does a lot of other businesses in town, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry? It wouldn't be though if I was bringing all the cars there. But that's pushing the problem down the street, right?
No, it's, we should get a parking plan. I don't think people would see the parking, there's no, it's not well that there's no big sign that says, "Park here."
No.
How are we going to know it's there?
No, I think, I think we all acknowledge that and I think we all acknowledge that, you know, if, if every business in town was operating at full capacity and had their excess cars at Keeney instead of on Main Street and Center Street and Garden Street, there would be 4,000 cars at the Keeney Center. Instead, there were none because they're all on Main Street and Center Street and Garden Street, but, you know, that, that's, that's not a problem that we, this commission can solve tonight and it's nothing that, that he can solve other than, you know, Paul was alluding to the comments in Derek's memo that we got today and I'm sure you didn't receive it in advance.
I did, I received it a few hours ago, but you know.
Did you have any reaction to the five bullet points at the end, the, you know, keep the capacity what it was, put back the two spaces that were lost for the outdoor seating, the valet serving you just mentioned, permanent signs and one year you've already talked about?
Uh, signage, I'm not sure what, how much more I could add. I, you know, I guess I could, I guess I could construct my own sign and put it in an appropriate place that was, you know, approved by Historic District Commission.
Yeah, I think that's what he was.
I mean, I guess I could, I could try, you know, with the help of the town, design a sign, I'm not sure how beneficial my sign would be. I think that should be, there should be continuity and signage, but we could, we could discuss that. Valet parking, I think, is not financially feasible or realistic for this town, I don't think, it would actually, I don't think it would work with just the other things that are happening.
Do you, do you require your employees to park?
All my employees are, are told to park in the Keeney Center.
Okay.
Except for on occasion, they sneak in, I have a note on the back door saying, "No parking in the firehouse," I, they, I would, I would assume there's very little problem with my staff not parking there.
Okay. No, because I know some other businesses.
Yeah, they're all, they're all, they all park there.
Yeah.
I'm not fond of my capacities and.
The other one was putting the two spaces back that were lost.
I, I mean, if I have to find two other spaces for my people to park, I could try to do that, but I don't think that, there, I don't think that affects the, this big problem.
Right. But I mean, it only, only in the sense of, you know, getting the 14 that you were approved for, I mean, it doesn't deal with the other 38, so.
Right.
Yeah.
You have to listen, for myself, I kind of agree with Pete, after listening to everybody, what I'd like to see is one-year extension, maybe so next year we can come back and talk about how the parking didn't approve or was approved. But I also kind of agree residential only on Center Street and the town, Tommy, you've got to get some town, put some signs up and do it correctly, you've got to get everybody over to Keeney. Now, if Keeney gets overloaded, then town should fix it, go talk to get the extra money and make the park a lot bigger, but I would approve that, that's what I would approve tonight, myself.
Well, I urge you to give me a little bit more time so I don't have to keep coming back here, it's an expensive process to get through.
The only reason why I say, I'd go longer, but if the parking's not fixed, nobody's going to come back next year, that's why I say you would be forced to come back and we could all go, oh, it's good, we're all good, then we can keep going. I have no problem keep going longer, it's just that I don't want it to disappear for two years.
Yep.
That's the only reason why I say it, but that's me, but I'm open to.
Yeah, I mean, I, no, I understand your point. Is anybody else on, Tony?
I was talking to Suzanne not too long ago and her testimony, I think, was nailed it, we all agree that it's a town issue. And you look back at, go down to Mystic or Essex and Chester, Connecticut, they resolve these issues and they come together. In the last couple of years, we've, we've had a new town manager, new police chief, new fire chief, new town planner, we have a new assessor coming in and we have a new economic development coordinator. I would state that maybe that's why this thing is that stagnant, with Deputy Mayor Mazarello in the room, hopefully this can be put on the top two or three priority lists with the town council in a bipartisan way. You're on economic development, we've been before this many, many times already, we've listened to a variety of people in Old Weathersfield, including the, the boondoggle and where we're at with Lucky Lou's and the noise issues. I would celebrate a one-year turnover with a half a million dollars, is a lot of money. And if there's more grants, that my colleague, Mr. Hughes, has said, more power to us, we're time to move, it's time to get going on this. The questions I have and I agree with our, my fellow commissioners, I think a one-year term would be good, hopefully you'd come back with a permanent patio this time next year, we could put that on the table. Would you consider valet in weekends when I can't get a table there and I know you're, you're booked to the nines?
I'll come pick you up.
You can walk.
Best restaurant in Connecticut, what do you want people to do? They got to come there.
You know, I think that's, I mean, important, I don't want to.
I would, I would state the implementation with this 2020 parking study was well done, I don't think we need another study, I think the facts are the facts and with the new players we have in town and the notes that I've seen Denise take, it'll be heard right through the department heads anyway on it, the funding is mentioned. I don't know if we've talked about the speed limits and putting speed, some kind of speed bumps in the roads anyway, I think that's maybe on the discussion list. Signage, we've talked about, the lighting issues that come into the other parking lots, I think that's a big concern going behind the Keeney Center and a variety of issues I've been to at late at night, that can be a little bit difficult, the paving. With your EDIC hat on, I think you could champion a lot of this too with, with the town manager getting, getting, putting this as a priority.
And the comment on that, you know, there, there is a lot of change in town, I think that is why it's taking a little, you know, a little longer.
And I'm excited about the players we have.
And it's an exciting change and, and the one thing I talk about at EDIC is, you know, the communication between what is happening on the administrative end in town and the communication with the residents and because, you know, I know so much that just from being in meetings with, with the, with the town manager and being part of something, like being a little bit more involved, there's so much going on and it's so good and I just get frustrated seeing the, the false narrative that's being portrayed in social medias and it's a really slippery slope to lose residents' faith, I guess, and hope in the town because I see so much good stuff going on and the players are amazing. Fred is going to be an incredible advocate for economic development and managing and getting this town to another level, right? Our police chief is, you know, when you talk about the presence of the police, I mean, he just bought six new bicycles for his staff, they, they are going to be around and seen, like, that is, you know, and, and his priority to be on the streets and be out of the cars and ours should be exciting for this, for this town and especially Old Weathersfield to see them and monitoring these, you know, this stuff. You talked about speed, I would love to see what speeds are down Center Street, can we get like that speed monitor thing? I would love to know. And face it towards the Charles so I can see what these trucks are doing because, you know, I do, they look fast, but they assure me they're not.
If you give reference to the parking study with the 11 short-term items, I think five or six have already been attended to, but they all, 11 on a short-term item, it needs to be done sooner than later. And the long-term items include eight bullets. It's a good document, it's well worth reading, it should be implemented sooner than later.
Tom?
I, I'm sympathetic to your, your application, particularly for more, more years rather than just, just one, because I see the issues being not really, that have been raised here tonight and I compliment the people in attendance for the positive suggestions and, and oversight and, you know, the general public findings here. I think you've demonstrated both wisdom and really good civic behavior in your attendance tonight and a lot of the issues that, that the public has raised are, are, you know, quite germane, but they, to a great extent, largely point to, you know, a failure in municipal leadership rather than problems relating to the operation of this particular business. And I do think that it's reasonable for this businessman to receive, you know, three years of, of an approval to do exactly what the commission had approved a year ago, because the issues relating to the economic fallout from the COVID-19 pandemic, which is still ongoing, there's roughly 500 people a day dying in this country still from COVID-19, not to mention, you know, the other diseases that are, you know, highly airborne transmissible that people are, are being subjected to, so, and all that's having, has had, had a huge economic effect upon, you know, both this country and, and the world in, in general. Not to mention that there's, you know, the first major war, you know, that's going on in Europe since World War II, so, you know, all these factors are having a huge negative impact upon the world economy and the economy of this country and the economies, you know, of this community as well. So, you know, things are quite unsettled and things probably will not settle down for, you know, for several more years hence. So I think it's reasonable for us to basically grant a continuation of the approval that was given to this business last March in the same form and format as had been approved at that point in time. That won't solve the parking problem, I think the parking problem is, has been, you know, very articulately explained and, and commented upon by the folks in, in this audience and I see the, the solution to that being a matter of the exercise of good municipal leadership of the municipal government, which goes beyond the realm of, of power and authority of this commission to, to solve. Essentially, what this commission needs to do tonight is essentially decide whether or not to grant the continuation of the special use permit for the outside dining that was granted to this business last year. And that, that's fundamentally, I think, the distinction of, of the various issues that we are confronted with. And so I, I would hope that the commission would exercise its discretion to, you know, approve the three-year period that has been requested for the operation of this business because I think it sure is in the town's interest that the business does continue and does continue to, you know, demonstrate, you know, excellence in the business affairs excellence in the business affairs of the Weathersfield community and particularly the old, you know, old Weathersfield community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I have a question. You mentioned that it's expensive to come back. Is there a cost to this? Can we waive that cost for him?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we can waive that cost.
Yeah, I guess, you know, kind of following up on what everyone else has said, particularly what, what Tom just said, you know, I'd be comfortable with more than one year, just simply because I don't think that the conditions necessary to solve the problem are going to happen in a year, although, you know, I, I think, you know, we, we can certainly exercise our persuasive powers when we talk about things like the capital budget to, you know, see what we can do to move it along, because I think it's, you know, it's a known issue. We've got the people in place, you know, in Town Hall, you know, are, are elected and appointed officials are aware of the problem. And I, I think, you know, just kind of need to bring it to a head, because it's obviously affecting people's quality of life. It's affecting businesses. You know, it's affecting our ability to move forward in a, in a constructive way. I always cringe when I see more than five people in the audience at one of our meetings, but I, but I do have to say that, at least so far, you know, everyone here has been extremely civil, cordial, neighborly, collegial, and constructive in their conversations. And, you know, I, I really do appreciate that, and I know we all do, because
Absolutely.
You know, we've, we've had enough kind of negative experiences up here over the years that, you know, it, it's kind of a breath of fresh air to get, you know, logical and thoughtful feedback from residents about a problem that is beyond our ability to solve. You know, that said, I don't know what other information we need tonight. Do you have any additional feedback or comments or anything?
No.
Okay. All right.
Is there a motion to close, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I mean, do you have any final words?
Um, no. I think we're good.
All right.
Motion to close here.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Discussion.
I think normally we start off with the
Does someone want to make a motion to, to initiate a conversation?
Which I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'd like to make a motion for one-year extension with the same terms we have now. Residential-only parking on Center Street, and the town has to do what they got to do to put appropriate signs up in front of the building. And whatever they need to do to get people over to Keene, substantial signs.
Residential-only parking is beyond the scope of our authority. We're not the traffic authority.
Well, we can, can't we say we asking for that?
We can encourage.
Encourage, okay, fair enough.
Yeah, I mean, we can't require it.
Okay.
Any other conditions, Denise?
I'll, I'll second that. Dave, can we add to that, that when he comes back, he doesn't have to pay the fee?
Yes, and when he comes back, he doesn't have to pay the fee. Again, the only reason I ask for one, one year is because I think if we say three, nothing's going to change in three years. He'll be back here again.
Yes. Probably, I think the change is going to occur regardless of what happens with this application.
I don't think it will. I bet you doesn't.
All right.
Okay. So, that's the only reason. Again, everybody can vote three years. I don't have a problem. I probably support it, but I'm just saying one year. Three years, you'll be back here, and nothing's going to change, unless you can keep staying on top of it.
This, you know, particular application. And, you know, what we do here tonight is not going to change the parking situation one whit. That's, that's a, you know, a municipal leadership issue that's beyond the scope of, you know, of our mission for tonight.
Well, the only reason why, though, that if you come back a year from now, people be noisy again. I mean, I tell you, I wouldn't want to live on Center, I, I wouldn't want to live on Center Street, right? You know, I feel bad for his businesses. He's got a great business, but I wouldn't want to live on Center Street. So, I think it needs to be fixed. If you don't do it in the next year, it won't get done.
I think a year will force the issue quicker than three years.
Yeah, I mean, a year from now, we'll invite the town manager and the town engineer to come here and listen.
Okay. Tom, Tom's here for the town council. Usually, you know, you've been very active. Tom, you got to do something. Put it on top of your list. I hate to say you got to do it, but got to do it.
All right. So, where are we?
It's only signs, not that difficult.
One year with the fee, with the
With the fee.
Yeah. In recommendation to stripe and do other signage for, for the town. Just a recommendation, I guess, because we can't enforce that. Right?
Yeah. You don't have to. Next year, just do your paperwork. Just change the date, put the same thing in. Just so we're, again, I'm not looking, I'm not looking at great work, but it just won't, I, I know it. We're back three years, now it won't happen. Nothing will happen. You guys will have nothing.
Well, you're ever the optimist.
But it's, because it's been like this, again, a year ago, it was like this. You know, I'm just saying, two years ago, and you got a great business. We need to figure out how to fix it. And you should come back a year from now and say, well, we tried this, it didn't work, but try something else. I just, I think this is a real problem, you know? And it's not that difficult. It's just some, has to try two or three things, and so.
All right. Any other discussion?
What about the town engineers? Do we have to include those? Are we doing one year? Because I'm, I'm against the valet parking requirement.
The applicant was less than tepid about any of these.
Against the valet, that's insane.
Yeah, I don't think we should have a valet parking. I agree.
No.
Come on, that's insane.
That's, yeah.
That's insane.
No, and I think working on the signage is, kind of goes without saying at this point.
And, and the additional two parking spaces, it's just, I'm not sure that makes any difference, and it's just an additional cost to this applicant that is unnecessary, in my opinion. So, right, you're not asking for the two additional spaces, are you?
Okay, you're the man asked for anything. I just let the town get involved and fix it. There's nothing here that's expensive that they need to put some stripes on the roads or something, do it. I mean, I don't think it's that difficult. And that's what people get paid a lot of money for in this town to do. They should do it. It's not that complicated, right? And if it doesn't work, come back again. Do something else. But last year, we sat here and did this, and nothing changed. So, it's such, I mean, I don't live there, so it doesn't bother me that much, but I do know, I wouldn't want to live there. So, you know, that's what I think.
Okay.
So, just so I'm clear, because I second that, what, what we're considering is essentially giving him approvals to operate exactly as he's operating right now for an additional year, in essence, right?
Yeah. With waiver of the additional fee.
With waiver of additional fee, yes.
And we'll keep the pedal to the metal on a variety of other issues. It's part of the minutes. It'll be stated. Town manager responds back within a couple hours of an email from a taxpayer. I've been in local government 47 years. I don't think I've seen that happen. It shows some accountability, and we have a whole new team running the town of Weathersfield. All right. Anything else? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you. All right. Next public hearing, 2133 23Z One Hope LLC, seek a special permit in accordance with Section 510 of the Weathersfield Zoning Regulations for a change of use from residential to mixed commercial and residential use at 133 Main Street.
Hi there. Good evening. I'm Kathy Clark. I live at 330 Main Street.
I'm Michael Clark, 330 Main Street.
And we recently purchased 133 Main Street, and we are seeking a change of use for part of the property from residential to mixed residential and commercial, as well as a special exception to the Weathersfield Regulation 510D.
So, over the years, 133 Main Street has had a lot of different iterations. It has been a mixed-use property for many years. So, there's two main structures. Well, there's three structures on the property. One is a garage, but there's also the Red Barn, which has been a naturopath for many years, and massage therapy. And we are looking to reinstate what was designed as retail property, retail space, as the enchanted heart for many years. And we're also looking to create another space in the front three rooms of what is now just zoned as a residential building. So, just an overview of our application. We are looking to take the structure that's 28, 120 square feet of residential use, in keeping with the old Weathersfield master plan that was brought up earlier. We're seeking to transform 1,317 square feet of the property of that structure into commercial space. So, that would leave 1,503 square feet of residential space, which would be 47% commercial, 53% residential. So, the structure that we're seeking a change of use for would still remain slightly more residential in use than commercial. In our plans, the newly established retail spaces would have a shared bathroom for employees by means of moving an existing bathroom wall to create two half baths instead of the current full bath. Overall, we want to retain all of the current historic elements and change as little as possible to the overall site, so that the exterior landscape remains in balance for commercial and residential use. We're not seeking any exterior site changes, including landscaping or lighting, in the hopes of retaining the current aesthetic. And we'll seek exemptions where necessary to do so. So, I guess we should probably speak to the, the parking, since that's the hot topic for tonight. And so, our property currently has seven parking spots. There's a small lot in the back, one handoff spot that's 11 feet wide with three and a, about three and a half feet of crosshatch space, five seven-foot-wide spaces, and a single-car garage that have serviced the parking needs of the residents and the Red Barn, which is currently commercially zoned. We submitted a aerial image with the current parking layout as part of our application. But to add the 1,317 square feet per code, we would require an additional 6.58, or to round up seven parking spaces. That would need to be absorbed by public parking options, such as the Keene Center Lot or street parking. So, we feel, you know, that it's reasonable to seek a, a special exception to the zoning regulation based on a number of different things that we plan on doing. So, each of the two mercantile businesses, I should start there. We're not looking to bring in another restaurant or an eatery of any kind. We're just trying to bring in small retail mercantile-style businesses. And each of the ones that we're considering for the spaces would only have a single employee working at any given time. The hours of operation would be in line with other mercantile shops on Main Street. So, for example, 11 to 5:00 p.m. Wednesday through Friday, similar weekend hours, perhaps closed Monday, Tuesday. So, the proposed business hours won't conflict with the busiest hours of local restaurants, in essence, dinnertime. Employees will be encouraged to utilize public parking, so as to free up the existing onsite parking, just as Bryce does with his Charles employees. The tentative businesses, they have a strong online presence, so some of their business will not actually impact the parking. The mercantile retail businesses that we're looking to bring into the area aren't single-destination businesses. So, we hope and anticipate that people will utilize public parking further down the street, walk to different businesses, and not create more of a demand just in our one area. The property has had, as I said, a long history of being mixed-use, and I think it's significant that there haven't been any parking issues on that property in the past. So, we're not looking to build an addition or add any square footage, but just to reuse the property how it traditionally has been used in the past. The town engineer also wrote some suggestions for us that we responded to, a lot of which I've just covered. But I just want to also address one, one recommendation that he had was to construct another driveway and an increased-sized parking lot in the back. But the back beyond the garage that's on the property is not village-business zoned. It's, it's residentially zoned. So, we can't really, we don't have an interest in, in pursuing building a big parking lot in a residentially-zoned part of our property that abuts a lot of neighbors and residences. And then, we do have room to the south side of our property, but our parking spaces predominantly already line the south side of the property. So, so utilizing that space would just be moving the spaces that we currently have over. So, there's really no practical way to add more, more parking for the square footage that we have currently. So, finally, you know, we recognize it can't be weighed in determining the outcome of our application, but we also, you know, just hope that the solutions that have been talked about tonight do affect the neighborhood positively and the parking there, so.
One quick question, Chairman. Do you, does the property currently, and would you contemplate having signage saying customer parking in the rear, basically, to encourage people to use the available spaces? Because I'm thinking people driving up and down who are coming to your place may not know that they're there.
Yeah, definitely. We'd be open to that.
The, the sketch that you provided was your hand sketch, right?
It was an aerial photo that had some
I mean, the, the accuracy of parking is probably going to be difficult. I think it's unstriped at this point, right?
The handicapped space is striped out, but that's it.
Would you consider striping everything else, just to keep everybody?
Yeah.
Because it's kind of hard to figure out where people would park otherwise.
Definitely. But first, we'd look to probably resurface the, the asphalt there.
Okay.
Jim?
So, the 1,300 square feet in the house, how many businesses do you anticipate being in there? One?
Two.
Two businesses.
So, there's one smaller spot that was built as the enchanted heart. So, that would be its own separate business. It has a separate entrance.
Okay.
And then, the other is the front three rooms of the structure that are closest to Main Street.
So, it's going to be, right, so it's 1,300 square feet, and that's going to be the only retail space divided technically into?
Yes.
I was a little confused, so.
Yeah, the 1,300 is both put together with the bathroom as well.
And then, the barn, the, we'll talk about, well, let's talk about the garage. Is the garage, do you anticipate renovating that and flipping that into retail space or any type of office, anything?
No, it's currently residentially zoned, and we aim to keep it that way. It actually, it's kind of, there's a line that's on the aerial map, so you can see that it looks like it goes about three feet into the garage. So, like, the front face of the garage is village-business zone.
Yeah, because I didn't know if it was concrete or if it was like dirt floor or what it was.
No, it's a concrete slab, and we don't have any interest in using that for commercial use.
Then the Red Barn in and of itself, I don't, I didn't see, how many square feet about is the Red Barn?
About 1,400.
And is that, that's historically, it was a law office of memory serves at one time?
Yep.
It was the Red Barn Christmas shop for a long time, and then it became the naturopath. I'm not sure if there was a law office. There was a law office in the barn.
Yeah, behind Buzz Willards.
Yeah, behind Buzz Willards.
Yeah, the law barn.
Yeah, in that barn. There was a law office.
And so, and then the Red Barn, we'll just call it the Red Barn, that has plumbing in it, everything. It's a standalone, commercial building.
Yeah, that's already zoned commercial.
Right, with 1,400 square feet. So, So what do you anticipate going in there? Two or three businesses?
No, we're actually just aiming for one business for that space as well.
Okay, so you're looking to have, and your 1,500 square foot apartment, what is that, three-bedroom?
Two-bedroom.
Two-bed?
Yeah.
Okay. But, there's not a site plan with this? I said, did the engineer ask for that, right? It's a little confusing without the site plan. Yeah, with a site plan, it just makes, you can put all the pieces together, a trued-up plan.
Yeah, I think we discussed that at the pre-application meeting, and it wasn't suggested to us at that time. So I did provide the floor plans for each floor and what we're aiming to do. It wasn't a professional site plan, but...
You might be able to, just on my side, this is just my opinion.
Yeah.
Just so you can really see how all the pieces of the puzzle, how it all pairs out. Thanks, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Anybody else? All right, if not, open it up to the public. Rose. Can I remember one person?
Rose Pish, 35, Center Street. My one area of concern about this is currently there is a fence that goes all along the front of the property, right to the back of the sidewalk. So if you're having extra cars come and go, that's a line-of-sight issue and a safety issue. As it is, when I walk around the block, you always have to stop there and make sure no one's coming out. Because they, depending on what direction you're coming from, they may not be able to see you. So one of the recommendations I would like to see is that that fence either be really low to the ground or, and/or removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Suzanne Barton, 55 Main Street. You can just copy and paste my comments from the Charles to this one, but I would just say that I'm in support of the Clark's plan of adding the commercial spaces, someone who lives closer to that than the other issue we were talking about. And I would also like to point out that the Clark's are successfully running a business in town with zero parking spaces. That is a huge destination for the area, and they're doing that without, from what I can tell, neighbor complaints or any issues. So there's clearly a commitment to making it work, and I hope you approve it. And with that, I'm going to make sure my kids didn't kill themselves while I was gone, so.
Good luck with that, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I also support that project. I don't think there's a parking concern. There's no parking spots left in that area anyway, so it can't be any worse. And I think we all talked tonight, town fathers will solve the parking problem, so a couple of new businesses will not affect that. Again, I support that project.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Melissa Kroll, 30 Center Street. I echo what Suzanne had said, fully support the project. I think the Clark's had opened the home up and had an open house. Everyone was able to see, any concerned residents were able to see the space, and I think that they are super mindful of the businesses that they run, and I think like Suzanne said, they're doing something very successfully without any concern of parking that gets a ton of volume of traffic. I fully support what they're looking to do with the residential and commercial zoning.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? All right. Give you a chance to think about whether you want to talk or not. We've received a substantial number of emails in support of this, including Charles and Eileen Albrecht, 25 Woodland Street, Peter Benson, 275 Main Street, Rosalyn Bravo Cavoli, Main Street, Mitch and Doty Knight, 307 Main Street, Brendan Lynch, 19 Coleman Road, Beth Riley, 12 Hubbard Place, Neil Walsh, 125 Main Street, Amy Wood and Sean Bell, 271 Main Street, Melinda Robidoux, 225 Main Street, Kelly Kamay, 38 Hartford Avenue, Sally and Doug Soudell, 323 Main Street, Sarah and Chris Pierce, 125 Broad Street, Dorothy Davinki, 14 Willard Street, Nathaniel McMullin, 358 Middletown Avenue, Andrew Weisner and Sheila Houlihan, 100 Center Street, with the comment to table to address parking, Brianna Bruno, 163 Main Street, Judith Melkreet, 357 Main Street, and Julia and Spiro Caloris, 263 Main Street. Anybody else in the public want to comment on this? Last call. All right. If not, the applicants want to come back up and give us any reactions to either public comment or final thoughts?
I appreciate the comments from everybody. I do know that the line-of-sight is an issue pulling out of the driveway. There's a sign that asks people to be cautious of pedestrians. The fence is pretty low for a fence. It's a very low picket. I can't tell you exactly how low it is, but it's lower than this partition here. And I think that the line-of-sight is impacted actually more by the hedge of lilacs that are between us and the Willards' property. I've already talked to the Willards about trimming that, and it's a conversation we have to have further. That impacts the line-of-sight turning left out of the driveway, and turning right out of the driveway, it's impacted more by cars parking in close proximity to the driveway. As long as people are pulling out slowly, I don't think the fence is necessarily an issue. You can pull up to where the fence is, see if there's a pedestrian, continue a few more feet, and then you have to edge out slowly to see around, you know, if there's a big SUV parked right in front of the property. So I would be open to investigating whether or not there can be, you know, a sign that prohibits parking for a certain distance from the driveway to give people a better line-of-sight to come out when they're turning right. I think that would be an acceptable kind of solution.
Thank you. I'll let the member of the public go. Just please come on up, so that we can get your recording.
Just a quick note. Wanda Hoopel again, from 55 Center Street. I was just ranting on the hall to let Dave in. Okay. So I appreciate Rose bringing up the line-of-sight and the safety issue. As a mother of a disabled 22-tall young man, 22-year-old, who likes to walk around the block continually, and, I mean, he's disabled because he's kind of lost in his thoughts and looking down, so I got to teach him to pay better attention, but that's right on his route, and his route is, has been a pretty safe route, because he goes from our house right around the block, and there are no streets to cross. But it's just, it's an issue that I appreciate you bringing up, and I fully support the Clark's to create their additional business in our neighborhood, and thank you for that, bringing that up. Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Somebody was going to ask a question up here, right? Jim?
Yeah. I would just, given the safety issue with that line-of-sight, and that's a single-lane driveway, right, it's, and I think the town engineer pointed out, between the two buildings, it's pretty tight going through there, is that right? With the single-lane driveway or however it works, which you make it work out, but it's just...
Yeah, I mean, it's operated that way with businesses in the past, so we're not looking to, you know, put businesses where there, you know, parking for a business where there hasn't been.
And then, because I just, myself, I would, a scaled site plan would be really helpful to me to just lay this out and see what the whole thing, the residential section, and the village business, and any lighting for your parking areas in the building, and how it's going to affect it, and how it's going to affect the neighbors.
Yeah.
And any shielding that you got to put up, or, you know, plantings or fencing or whatever, whatever else you got to put up.
Yep.
And have you gone, and the next question is, have you gone to historic district yet, and have they given you any feedback?
No, we have not. We did the pre-zoning application, and as our application states, we're not looking to change any exterior lighting, so that wouldn't involve, you know, as you said, any shielding or anything.
There is currently, sorry, residential lighting out back, like a lamp post by the back door, but the businesses that we're looking at are daytime businesses, so additional nighttime lighting wouldn't even be warranted back there.
Between the structures where the driveway curves to the left, there is a brick patio there that's about 16 feet wide. So there is, you know, it's not super tight between the buildings. So, historic district commission, we plan to have business owners go through when it's time to deal with signage or anything that will impact the exterior of the site. We invited the building inspector to come out, and Anthony Dignati, the fire marshal, to come out. Anthony came out already and discussed our plans with us, but we didn't see a need for the historic district commission just yet.
Thanks.
Are you proposing any additional impervious surfaces in the parking area?
No, we would very much like to avoid that.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, according to Derek's memo, that could trigger stormwater calculations and so forth.
Yeah, we have a number of reasons for not wanting to add space. I mentioned a couple of the logistical issues with adding space. One would encroach upon current residential land. The other just wouldn't add spaces going to the left, going south of the property. But also, right now, we really like how the balance of residential grass usage is with the commercial space, so we don't want to make an enormous parking lot in the back that would, you know, detract from the residential aspect of the property.
Okay. Peter, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just to Jim's point about some sort of a site plan being helpful, I mean, we talked about a number of different things tonight that are unclear to me how they're going to manifest themselves. You said, maybe I'll improve the paving, the surface, and I'll stripe it, which are good things to do, and I think you should. A site plan would designate where the improvements are going to be, you know, maybe it's not all the area, and maybe some of the area, and exactly, you know, where the lines would be. We talked about maybe a sightline issue coming out to the right. A site plan would address that, and at least you can talk with the town engineer how far back you'd want vehicles to be. So I think it would be appropriate, not to cause you any extra cost, I mean, if you could at least lay out something to scale...
It is. It was submitted with the application. There's an aerial image that's laid out to scale.
I didn't see a site plan.
It's not a formal site plan.
That's, that's...
So, so when they were here for the pre-application review, I mean, the conversation came up regarding whether or not they should submit a site plan, and essentially, if the additional parking spaces are not going to be required, should they be required to submit a site plan? So that's really, if there's no improvements proposed, what would the site plan show?
The site? It would show the site, the exact location of the parking spaces, how they're going to stripe it, what repairs they would be doing to the surface, how far back they want the setback for the cars. I mean, this is stuff that we've discussed tonight, and none of it's really defined.
And the other thing is, the two people have come up, just as a safety factor, and it is tight, hey, it's an old area and all that, and when you look at a site plan, you can look, maybe it is viable, maybe they do need to move the driveway to the south side. I can't say without a measured site plan, I can't be like, oh, hmm, and then it's offset and all that, and maybe they abandon the driveway to the north. I can't say without, I understand, I appreciate the photo of it, but until someone puts the measurements on it and kind of lays it out in a formal fashion, and if there is no spillover or all that, that'd just be noted on there, and that's what we're going to do, and that's pretty much...
If I can...
It's okay, you know, I'm just one voice, that's all I can say.
Two voices.
If I can just respond briefly, I think it's important to note that we're looking to use the property in a way that it's been used in the past. I could understand if, you know, we were trying to do something completely different with the property or add an addition, but to just reinstate prior usage, we have a proven, successful setup. The things that we're talking about doing, like resurfacing the pavement, it's just, you know, like filling cracks and, you know, painting lines that delineate what's already been there. You know, there's very faded lines, so we just want to, you know, make them nicer. When we're talking about the sightline issue, it's things that I've already, even before somebody addressed, I talked to the neighbor about, like, we're just trying to make improvements on the current situation. We're not trying to put something where it wasn't before, as far as the driveway or parking.
No, I think, I think we understand each of the positions. I guess the question now is, you know, basically, we've had the public hearing, are we going to continue the public hearing, demand that they come back with a site plan, or are we going to, you know, close the public hearing and vote on it, with the condition that they submit a site plan to town staff? You know, and if that's the case, then, you know, what good does it do?
So if you take a look at the minutes that are in your packet from the last meeting on January 4th, they had come for the pre-application review on page five. I am asking the commission if I should require, as part of their submission, a survey showing the spaces on the property. So...
I think we said it was needed.
That's correct.
Was or was not? It was not needed. You mentioned maybe suggesting a plot plan, never mind a survey.
Right.
I thought that maybe just wasn't part of the minutes. Yeah, I mean, it apparently said that it would be helpful to have a plot plan so that we'd know what it was we were talking about, and can make an informed decision. But it wasn't going to hold up things, I didn't think.
But not a survey, right?
Okay.
A site plan does not have to be an A2 survey. It could be just a plot plan from the town, scaled properly with whatever notes you want to put on it. It's as simple as that.
So how would that differ from what I submitted?
It would be all to scale and shows all the features of the property in one piece of paper. Becomes part of this approval and documents exactly what you're doing. Right now, all we have is a sketch from an aerial view that maybe is or isn't in scale.
It's taken from the town website that's to scale, so I don't know how that's...
I think it would have been just a cleaner application if we had the plot plan showing the dimensions, locations, use of each section. I mean, even the garage, are you going to be doing anything with that garage, what's inside the garage?
It's...
Can it hold two cars, so you'll have nine instead of seven?
No, it's a one-car garage, and right now it houses a lawnmower and a generator and, you know, property... No, it's a one-car garage, um, and right now it houses, it houses a lawnmower and a generator and, you know, property maintenance.
That's all you needed for it.
Yeah.
I mean, a site plan probably would have helped, a plot plan, whatever you want to call it, but I clearly remember that discussion. So it does.
All right.
The area to the left, it's all grass and lawn now, you're leaving that as is, you won't be expanding out into that or changing anything?
Correct.
All right, so probably at this point, we need to decide whether we're going to continue the hearing to require a site plan or a plot plan or not. So someone make a motion.
Can I ask if there's a sense of urgency? Do you have tenants moving in tomorrow? Are they occupied now?
Not tomorrow, um, but we, there is a sense of urgency, yeah.
What, a two-week delay? Uh, be too distracting?
It's, um, you know, we, we want to be able to present this properly to everybody. I feel like, you know, we did what we were asked to at the pre-approval meeting. Um, so it's, uh, I'm not going to say that the delay would be without impact to us, so.
Do you have to go to the historic commission?
If exterior improvements are required.
Okay, you're not doing, they are, if they were.
So what, what are we holding them up from doing for two weeks?
Well, if we were to close the hearing and approve it, they could start occupying the property.
We can make arrangements for occupancy. We do have people waiting to hear from us about next steps. And I'm also dealing with, uh, an engineer, or actually more than one engineer for work that would have to commence in order for occupancy. So it would delay any hiring of building professionals. You know, we have to have the load rating, that the floors assessed, there's things that like, if this isn't approved, we're not going to do. If it's approved, we can move ahead with all of our plans, so let's.
So, and so you, you need a variance for seven parking spaces, correct? And change of use, right?
Yep.
So, and like I said, this is, it's not a, this isn't like a little, this isn't just a paint and wallpaper job, it's a major undertaking of this house, right? This property, you said engineering and whatnot.
Well, to cover our bases for occupancy, yes.
So to cover our bases, to make the decision, this, this is just me, and I, I apologize if, but that's just my opinion about it. Having a print, you have the print, like you said, it doesn't need to be a full-fledged survey. Cause to, to reflect upon, uh, our town engineers' comments about the, the, the driveway to the south, except and other things, I just, but.
Can't you just go down to town hall and get a copy of the plot plan, you can draw your little driveway on it, would that be heck of a deal? Scale it up, this all comes off scale anyways, right? No, you're not, you're saying no, isn't that all?
Assuming the current one exists.
There's no.
There's not one for that place?
There's no plot plan?
Hundreds of years has not been done, huh?
It's gotta be a plot plan.
It's, it's not a full plot plan, what was submitted in 2004 with the red barn.
I know my colleague Jim is 200 years old because he knew exactly what was there 200 years ago.
Well, it's actually part of the firehouse, the red barn, it's the original firehouse.
I know, I know.
You probably know the dimensions and what it, what color's inside. But, um, you, you, it had this use before, the use changed, you're here because you want to reinstate the former use as known now as a mixed use. It ran its business out of there comfortably, the issue with the site, I think the issue with exiting that driveway is significant, and you're going to attend to that. Fire marshals, uh, attended the issue, the building code issues have been discussed. I don't know if we need a plot plan or a site plan, I think we talked about this at the previous meeting.
I, I think it would be good to have, but since we've given you mixed signals and you're actually needing to move this along, I, I guess I'm not going to be hard and fast on this. Would have been nice to have, to have something, even if it was some variant of a plot plan. And maybe in the future, we just want to make sure that we try to get that by other people. So I'm okay with, with kind of proceeding as is. But I would like to see, uh, a motion that says that the sight lines are going to be considered and discussed with the town engineers, and some appropriate steps are taken, so when you come out right, it's safer. And, you know, I, I, obviously, I don't know what that's going to look like now because it's not drawn anywhere, but it should be something that is part of our, you know.
That's reasonable.
Can't the town, can't the town engineer then say, here was my recommendation to make it safe and?
Then he, then we get into a situation where if they disagree, they'll be back here asking us to, to, to mediate, that's what happened before. That's what happens when you don't have a plot plan, that's the problem.
I guess they just don't want to see how it gets held up.
Submit, um, submit a plot plan, going to change our.
Change it now.
I didn't think so.
I, I'm, I'm ready to move tonight, Jim, I think.
It's not written in the file now, so why would we put it in there?
All right, somebody want to make a motion to do something?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
All right, that sounds good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, uh, somebody want to make a motion on the application itself?
I'll make the motion to approve application 2133, 23Z for 133 Main Street, One Hope LLC, for a special permit in accordance with 5-10 mixed use. And the property has, currently has seven parking spaces, which will be sufficient for this approval.
Second.
Do you want to add the comment that Peter had about the sight line?
Sidelines will also be noted and reviewed by town staff.
For, for the right exit.
Right, yeah.
But I think both.
Oh, okay. All right, motion made, was it seconded? Any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Does anybody need a break, or do you want to power through this? Next one should take about one minute.
You counted one by fifteen, so we could sit here.
Okay, good. All right, next item, public hearing, 2129, 23Z, Town of Weathersfield, seeking zoning text amendment for sections 32C3 and 41B1 under provisions of section 101F of the Weathersfield zoning regulations for regulating forest practices. Basically, the long and short of this is there's somebody at Deep with way too much time on their hands skimming our zoning regulations for the word forestry and completely misunderstanding the statutes. But they want us to take the word forestry out of the list of permitted uses because we're not allowed to regulate it under state law.
I was just going to log my ear.
Well, you can now, hurry.
So this removes us from regulating woodlands?
Grapples? It prohibits us from permitting, as in, as of right, use forestry because the state thinks they have jurisdiction over that.
As much as I'm a small government guy, I don't know if we can argue any more.
Frank Morris would be up in arms on this.
I'm kind of curious, is there a definition in the statutes in terms of what forestry is? And is there a difference between forestry and say, a tree farm?
Yes.
Cause we have a tree farm.
I would think that, you know, a tree farm, you know, would, would be an acceptable agricultural use.
There's one on Elm Street.
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's, Deep is very jealous of its ability to regulate forest practices and forest practice practitioners. And they, their spidey sense starts tingling if they see the word forestry.
What happens if we do nothing? What happens if we don't change it?
What are we doing at Urban Weathersfield?
We go into Deep zoning jail.
Wow.
These minutes are going to be interesting.
With like bears and unruly bears and stuff like that.
Right, yeah. Wolverines.
So we need a motion or?
Yeah.
If there's a Christmas tree farm here, that's an agricultural use, and that's not forestry, right?
What is it?
I'd say if someone, you know, say if one of our farmers starts up a Christmas tree farm, or say in a hundred years, when the climate around here is sort of like,
Reject it with prejudice.
Miami Beach, and someone wants to raise palm trees for coconuts. You know, they can do that as an agricultural use as distinct from having a forest.
How about this? I'll make a motion, reject it with prejudice.
Can we accept it?
And he's got to come in and present to us, I don't know what this guy's talking about.
Sorry, what?
Can we accept it and say we'll come back, we reserve the right to revisit in five years or something?
Yep.
Well, I mean, we could amend it again next week, put it back in, but.
Only if he's proposing an outside patio.
I hope he had a flannel shirt on when he called.
I'd say let's go ahead and make the change, it's innocuous enough, the change doesn't really, I think, detract from our powers or the town's powers or authority.
No, I mean, and.
In material ways, so.
I mean, and frankly, growing trees falls under agriculture, we don't need the word forestry as a redundancy.
They want to make a motion to eliminate it.
To amend the regulations to, section 32C3 and 41B1 to remove the word forest.
Okay, how's that?
So do.
This is also a public hearing, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's probably what everybody's here for. Anybody in the public want to comment on this application?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, um, motion by Tom, second by George to close the hearing. Someone want to make a motion to approve the application?
So moved.
Second.
With an effective date of March first?
Twenty eighty.
George, wow.
All right.
What was the effective date?
March first.
Rich, I work with the PA 490 Forest Land statutes on anything over 25 acres, we don't have any of that here, so I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay, good. How about the 10 mil forest? Do you have any of them?
Oh, that's asleep. That's too exciting.
Forestry out of our zoning regulations.
I have to tell Joe Hickey that.
Yeah, you can call these people. All right, motion's been made and seconded, I think, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? You're opposed?
Mr. Hughes opposed.
All right. Minutes of December 2nd, we're 6th. Those are really short.
Were we all there?
The only comment I had was on page three about the U-Haul trucks, I think that's the wrong address. Should be 600 and something instead of five. All right, someone want to make a motion to approve these?
I don't think I was there.
You don't have to be there to approve.
To approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. George, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions?
And Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you said that. There are commissioners who thought they had to be here for the minutes.
Well, I mean, it seems kind of silly to, to approve minutes of a meeting you weren't at.
All they got to do is read them and make sure they look logical.
Yeah.
And let somebody who has a complaint about what actually happened, say what they need to say. Otherwise, everybody can vote for it.
Minutes of January 4th, 2023. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve. I read each, each and every item in the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, staff report.
Uh, the only thing that I wanted to let you guys know, we did receive the application for, uh, the self-storage facility on the Berlin Turnpike that had received the, um, text amendment, um, just recently. So they did submit to wetlands and design review, it will be on the design review agenda next Wednesday. Um, and it will be on the, um, March, um, inland wetlands, uh, agenda.
Okay. What do we have on the next one?
Uh, the next meeting, we have an application for 708 Silastine Highway, that's the, uh, expansion of the convenience store. And we also have an application for a change of use at 1142 Silastine Highway. That is in the Marshalls Plaza where Bev Maxx was, um, they're looking to locate a salon.
Okay. Yeah, I'm probably going to have to miss that for work.
Okay.
Just a heads up.
And that is a Wednesday meeting.
Where the liquor store was?
Yes.
Denise, what, what's going on with, is it 1000 Silastine where someone wanted to put in an Asian grocery store? Wasn't that mentioned in one of the meetings before?
Uh, there is a grocery store, Asian grocery store going in where the Indian grocery store was and the Gulfbrook Shops on the south end. It was Annapurna. Um, 1000 Silastine Highway is the former Weight Watchers. Um, and that property right now are building, fire, and, uh, zoning officials all have active, um, violation notices with the property owner for using the building for storage, uh, without permission. Um, and it's also not a permitted use for that property.
What's, what's being stored there?
Um, there's, I haven't been in myself, um, there, there's a bunch of dried goods, but there is also food items being used, uh, being stored in the freezers.
It's a chicken coop.
Chicken is from Bosr. Rich, just a comment?
Sure.
I, I don't know if you guys all saw, but just the other day, the Carficker had an article on Simmsberry with the marijuana retail. And so it looks like, let's say marijuana, it looks like they're going to kill it, but not yet, but I don't think they're going to do it.
Yeah, that's, that's their inclination.
So an update for the regulations, we did, um, send a draft to CROG, um, maybe about two weeks ago, so that will be on your first agenda in March.
It's going to be a public meeting, right?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, public comments? Come on up, public.
Really? Tom Mazarello, 600 Walker Hill Road. I just wanted to, uh, give you a little bit of update on the parking activities in Old Weathersfield that, uh, Mr. Homakey signed me up for correcting all the problems in the next week. Some of the things that were discussed tonight, you know, the parking striping and so forth, signage, I think we could reasonably expect that to happen fairly, fairly soon. The parking lot behind the firehouse is a huge issue. I don't know all the details of it, but there's multiple property owners involved. Um, there's, there's access issues. We do have $500,000 when it was first laid out in some, you know, multiple, as Denise indicated, there's multiple scenarios of what could go in there. It was budgeted at $1.2 million, we received $500,000. The crosswalk that we just put in, in front of Kini, in the sidewalk, which was in, the intent was to provide some safety for people parking at Kini and walking to other businesses, that came in at $175,000. So the $1.2 million for the parking lot is, it's out the window. So I don't, I don't see that parking lot, uh, being constructed in anytime soon. To George's comment about Main Street with the parking, at last, last night's town council meeting, we, um, gave our nod to approve, uh, apply for, uh, grant money, Lozic money to, uh, rehabilitate Main Street all the way from, I believe, from Garden to State Street. We've done some of the, um, traffic calming measures, um, and it's part. And it's part of a bigger plan to slow the traffic down on Main Street. Some, possibly one more raised crosswalk and some intersection pedestrian improvements. But that, last night, Derek's going to proceed with the application. We won't find out for four or five months whether we get the money. And it's probably a two-year project after that, so. These things take time and it may look like the town's not doing anything about parking and roads and traffic. It's just not the case, it's just a time-consuming project. And I think some of the people that are on board are doing an excellent job. And it just takes time, so.
You're hoping for state funding.
We're hoping for state funding. There is a lot of, there's a lot of money out there at the current time. And we're trying to get projects, I guess, roughed out. They want to see submissions that have a good chance of succeeding. And we're spending a lot of time and effort getting these projects and these ideas put on paper so that we can submit for various grants, so. It's, I think it's an exciting time. There hasn't been that kind of money floating around in quite some time. And we're trying to be right at the front of the line with ready-to-go projects, so.
Anything, Tom, we can do about 1,000, you know, Silastine Highway and the owner? He's not being very cooperative, is he?
I don't know the details of that transaction.
Maybe you guys.
Probably shouldn't comment.
Tom, thanks for the update. I think messaging is what it's all about. We have 20, 30 people here.
I know, it's 10 o'clock, I didn't want to drag it out, but.
It's a good graphic.
Just share a little bit of the information.
Appreciate the update.
And I will be with the town manager tomorrow, and he may be watching the meeting, I don't know, but we'll discuss a lot of the.
Since I have been talking to him lately, ask him about 1,000 and what he wants to do about that.
One other comment I just wanted to make about the signage with the parking. Matter of fact, I sent Rich a photo tonight. I do a lot of walking in Old Weathersfield, late morning or whatever, when Charles gets their deliveries. And there's a couple no parking signs right at the corner of Main and Center Street. And pretty much all the time I go walk by, there's a truck there in the no parking, unloading. So, you know, it's, a lot of it's enforcement. And with the customers, it's difficult. You know, you don't want the police out there towing cars away on Center Street when they're, you know, customers, visitors to our town. You want to get them to park in the right place. Very frustrating, we put that crosswalk in at Kini at a huge expense. People don't use that. The last three times I've been in the Kini parking lot, I follow people out. They walk down the middle of the driveway, they don't use the sidewalk that got put in. And they cross, you know, it's like tunnel vision. They look to where they want to walk and they don't use the crosswalk, so. It's hard to get people to change their.
That crosswalk looks intimidating, I'm sorry to say. And I told the raised crosswalk, I told our town engineer, charge of roads. I said, you know, after it was done, it doesn't slow any traffic down.
No, it's more of a visual thing, in my opinion.
Visual, yeah.
The fire department had a big issue with the raised crosswalk, so they wanted to have it as subtle as possible for the fire trucks. And, you know, Derek admitted last night that it is a little bit more subtle than he anticipated, but.
Back to the enforcement thing. I think that's one of the missing pieces here, right? And when it comes to enforcement, right, and that's why I was interested in Bryce's reaction to it, too. It's a continuum, right? I mean, some communities I've visited, they have like, I don't know what you would call it. Not like traffic, you know, not like New York traffic cops, but like they're hired by the community and paid for by the businesses to go around and shoot people away and do that type of thing. On the other hand, you look at places like Chatham, Mass., if you've ever been up there on the Main Street in Chatham. They have those box parking. Man, your tire is a millimeter over that white line and you're going to tickle, like people totally aren't up there.
Yeah.
There's a fine line in there, right? And that's why you want enforcement. We could put all the signage up in the world, but if there's no enforcement, it's a waste of time. But at the same time, you don't want it so draconian that people say, I'm not coming to Weathersfield to push the hassle. So that could be put in the mix.
And the idea of the police officers on bicycles, and maybe in the summertime, that, you know, that could help. And, you know, just directing people where to park and not, you know, not towing cars away, but, you know, it's unfortunate, the one incident that was discussed tonight, I mean, I'd still like the person to submit the license plate number, go after the guy, but, you know.
Probably you can't do that, that's hearsay and all.
Anyways, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom, appreciate it a lot.
Anything else from the public? Okay.
The only other thing I wanted to mention is the invitation that we got from the CFPZA regarding the annual conference at the Aquater.
Put me down, please.
It's going to be March 23rd. It starts at 5:00 PM. They're going to be talking about affordable housing plans, accessory dwelling units, electric charging stations, and fair housing mandates. So if anybody wants to attend, let me know. And we'll take a look at the longevity and see if anybody is eligible for an award this year.
I do, I said, put me down.
All right.
Yeah, I'll go.
Can we give George another award?
A double lifetime, George?
Yeah, that's right. They ought to do that down there, tell them that. I've been going for.
I think the topics are really good.
Forty or 50 years, I swear.
I'm like the Keith Richards of zoning.
George, I have a conflict that I can.
They know me, I know who his father, that's how far back I go.
George, could you bring hard copy back? I have a conflict that night, I can't attend.
No.
What?
No, I can't do that.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
That's unfair, you got to pay your proper share.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, George?
I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
All good, they're all set. Oh, yeah. No, you can do that on your way back.